Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us for the February 16th at Berkeley School Board Meeting. Ms. Barrios, can you please begin with your
El siguiente mensaje será repetido en español. I would like to provide a brief overview of tonight's meeting. After a few procedural items, the board will hear thirty minutes of public comment. At the end of the meeting, there will be another and final opportunity for additional public comment. So if you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, you can stay and speak at the end. To participate in public comment, please raise your hand now by clicking on the participants button at the bottom of your screen and selecting the Raise Your Hand. To comment by phone, you'll be prompted to raise your hand by pressing star nine. If you want to wait to raise your hand until a public comment period starts, you will not get to speak and you'll have to wait until next public comment period. When called upon, you will be promoted to panelists. This means that you will appear on screen. If you do not wish to appear on camera, please be sure to disable your camera on your end. The board president will usually call in our students first. If you are a student who wishes to speak, please write "student" or "s" at the end of your name. The board president will determine whether to set tonight's speaking time at one, two, or three minutes per speaker. On an individual basis, she also has a discretion to allow for extra time for those who have who need translation or have other special needs. When your time has elapsed, you'll see Vice President Babbitt holding a sign letting you know you have fifteen seconds left. If you are still speaking, you are allowed to finish your sentence, but please try not to speak beyond your time. Thank you.
Voy a proporcionarles un resumen detallando el orden de esta reunión. Después de unos producimientos premilinares, un periodo de treinta minutos será dedicado a comentarios públicos. Al final de la junta, que usualmente puede ser cerca de las diez, habrá una segunda y última oportunidad para quienes desean participar y comentario público y parte de miembros de la audiencia que no tuvieron la oportunidad de proporcionar comentario durante el primer periodo de comentario público. Para comentar por videoconferencia, a favor de levantar la mano y haciendo clic en el botón participantes en la parte de abajo de la pantalla y selección el botón Levantar la mano or Raise Your Hand. Para comentar por teléfono, levanta la mano presionando estrella nueve. A favor de celo ya, ya que si se espera hasta el inicio del periodo de comentarios públicos, tendrá que esperar hasta el final de la reunión para participar. Usualmente, la presidente llamará a los estudiantes primero. La presidente de la mesa directiva o tarará uno, dos, o tres minutos por orador y tiempo adicional a quienes requieren traducción o cualquier otra adopción especial. Al ser llamado para promocionado al panelista y aparecerá en pantalla. Si no desea de parecer en pantalla, por favor de apagar su cámara. Cuando le faltan quince segundos, la vicepresidente le hará saber levantando un cartel. Si sigue hablando cuando se acaba el tiempo, puede terminar su oración, pero por favor trate de no sobrepasar su tiempo. Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much, Ms. Barrios. For the record, I'd like to officially call the meeting to order at this evening at seven oh eight P M. We have now reached the point in our agenda where we need to approve the regular meeting. Is there a motion to approve the meeting? The meeting agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Moved by Vice President Babbitt. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Director Alper. Ms. Barrios, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Do we have student director and student director Mascherini Swan?
Student Director Mascherini Swan is excused for this evening. I'll address that when we take the actual roll call.
Director Anna Basuve.
Yes.
Director Julie Sinai.
Here.
Director Ty Alper.
Yeah.
For the record, we are voting to approve the agenda. We are not calling the roll. So your response is either yes or no. Do you mind going back, Ms. Barrios, to Director Sinai?
Not at all. Director Sinai.
Yes.
Director Ty Alper.
I just do whatever Director Sinai says. Yes.
Vice President Laura Babbitt.
Yes.
And President Kadija Brown.
Yes. Thank you so much, Ms. Barrios. Can you please call the roll? And for the record, again, Student Director Mascherini Swan is excused for this evening.
Director Basuve.
Presente. And for the next one, Director Alper, you should follow my lead.
Director Julie Sinai.
Yes. No.
Director Ty Alper.
Presente.
President Laura Babbitt.
Presente.
And President Kadija Brown.
Presente.
Thank you so much. I am super excited about this evening's meeting. If you were joining us a couple of weeks ago, you might this year, the school board has taken a bit of a added a little bit of something exciting and special to our school board meetings this year. And that is our Equity Showcase. We began our Equity Showcase with Longfellow Middle School presenting about the incredible ways that they are making for our students. And tonight, we are so honored to have our Visual and Performing Arts Department, VAPA, to present their Equity Showcase for us and talk about their ongoing efforts within the school district to make sure that our students have wonderful equitable opportunities. And so I am delighted to introduce our Visual and Performing Arts Department and excited to receive their presentation. Let us please welcome them.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Shannon Houston, and I am the orchestra director here at Longfellow Middle School. Before you tonight, we have both current and former students from our orchestra program here, and we're going to perform very briefly for you. But before we do so, we'd like to say a few words, and I'm going to hand it over to the students.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Stevens, panelists, and community. My name is Julia Allen, and I am a proud sixth grader at Longfellow Middle School. We are here today to read BUSD's mission and value statement.
The mission of the Berkeley Unified School District is to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and positive contributions to our world.
The values and beliefs of the Berkeley Unified School District are: Students are our priority. We take pride in our diversity. We hold high expectations for ourselves and our students. We treat others with respect and act with integrity.
Thank you and have a great meeting full of BUSD's four E's: Excellence, Equity, Engagement, and Edredment. Please enjoy our brief performance that we have prepared for you.
We hope you enjoy the rest of your meeting tonight. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, students. Hello, everybody. I'm Pete Gidlin. I'm the... Can I take it from here? Is it okay? I'm Pete Gidlin. I'm the supervisor of the Visual and Performing Arts for BUSD. I'm going to share my screen and start my presentation. Oh, right. Okay. So again, thank you, students, for performing. Thank you, Mr. Houston, for leading. My name, again, I'm the supervisor of the Performing Arts, Visual and Performing Arts for BUSD. My name's Pete Gidlin. And I'm excited to share my equity work and the progress we've made as a department. Really, because when I came into this position, I came in kind of with the interviewed actually with the promise of making equity my first priority when dealing with the arts. And I also came and basically presented this issue and really presented the work that I'd been doing in my master's thesis up until that point of where I was interviewing for this job, again, seven years ago. And basically, what I was seeing is that although we have this fantastic music program where we serve third, fourth, and fifth graders, and fourth and fifth grade, every student is involved in instrumental music. And we're able to say that we serve a hundred percent of, number one, every student, but number two, any demographic that we could name, we could say we serve a hundred percent of those students in that program. The problem that I started identifying as a teacher and other people were seeing too is this question: Why do middle and high school music classes contain contain an underrepresented numbers of BIPOC students? That was really kind of the question. And so in that work, in my own research, and here you can kind of see the numbers, I'm going to kind of let you look at those that that basically, let me go back a step here. Sorry. That basically with the, you can see in elementary school, we serve a hundred percent of every demographic. In middle school, when kids get to choose to be in music or not, we see a drop in kind of every demographic. It's natural. Not everybody wants to always be in music, and that's okay. But we should see a representative spread. And instead, we see drop-offs in our BIPOC students. And so I began asking the question of why? And in my research, in talking to community members and students and parents, families, basically, they told me five things. They said, well, there's a non-diverse teaching team. At the time, it was basically mostly basically an almost all-white teaching team and team in general in the music department. A need for culturally relevant teaching strategies, a need for parent input, and really a lack of, the fourth one is kind of a lack of visibility and kids not seeing themselves and people like them in the program and so on, and the communication that goes with that. And then, fifth, there were prohibitive school structures like small schools at Berkeley High, and the schedules conflicted so that different folks couldn't take the music classes they wanted to and so on. And that's just one example of a school structure. And so basically, I began, I presented a possible solution to each one of these, and I've been working on those with my team for the last seven years, and I'm going to address those right now and basically show you a little bit of what we've been able to accomplish. So as far as the problem of having a non-diverse teaching team, basically, I went to work right away as soon as I started the job and started recruiting. I started speaking at colleges, especially their music education departments where people were getting credentials. I visited HBCUs, and I would speak, and I would reach out to students. I would follow up with them, build relationships with them, keep emailing them, keep in contact via phone. And I can honestly say that at this point, it takes a while because we actually don't have a high turnover rate in our staff, which is great. And it takes a while, though, to recruit and hire. And we've made some big changes in these very few years to where we have a forty, from basically a five percent to a forty percent BIPOC staff in the music department, in the VAPA music department, which I think is a number that is a pretty high number for a staff across the board in our district. And this is what they look like. This is our music staff that serves really TK through twelve throughout the district. And you can see that this is a diverse and pleasant, good-looking bunch. And I'll speak more about them as I go. The second was a need for culturally responsive teaching. We got right to work, and we've always been involved in book groups and reading groups. And there's recently been some social justice and culturally competent work that's specific to music education, and we're going through that. So we've done all kinds of work on this. We do inquiry work through Mills College, the Lead by Learning Program. And just as a side note, if you want to listen to a cool podcast, J.J. Hanson, one of our music teachers, spoke on a podcast called Steve Barclay Ponders Out Loud. And she talks about all of our inquiry work that actually focuses on equity that we do during PD once a month. So check that out. Third, need for a parent group. We've started a small parent group that was active and currently with our new equity specialists, who I'll talk about in a minute, we're starting some new parent groups that are sort of parent advisory input groups to get families' voices. The lack of visibility, communication, and representation we struggled with for a long time. And I finally basically just kind of figured we need to create a position. And this position has the same job description as the OFE staff, but this equity specialist that works for VAPA just directly works for VAPA and reports to me. This is Jay Whittington, who's just a tremendous asset to our group. Jay implements programs, works with kids, and works with families, and sees needs and makes the phone calls and does the home visits and the whole thing. Has created mentor programs and all kinds of things that we'll talk about in a second. So this has been a game changer to have an equity specialist working for the music department. And as far as prohibitive school structures, we just, those happen all the time. We just attack those as they come up. We've made all kinds of changes, creating more course offerings, more instrument offerings, having the high school check individual kids' schedules and all kinds of things that we have to do to make sure that every kid has an opportunity to take an arts class or a music class. Okay, so what are we working on now? That's the question. That's kind of, that was basically what I just showed you was our Equity Plan Phase One. And so what are we working on now? Well, we've got a few things going on. First of all, now we don't have one equity plan. We have three. One is the, the first one is the one I showed you before. The middle one is more equity specialist-focused. That's what Jay is taking on there in the middle. And then we're currently creating a teacher-focused one, and the teachers are actually creating that together and committing to the things that are on there. In a minute, when I have some free brain space, I will put the link to those documents in the chat if I can. And that way, people will have their live documents and their public documents. And I think they're exciting. They include report cards on how well we're doing on each one of those. So you can actually see data and changes and things like that. We have all kinds of programs. A lot of these are what Jay Whittington is working on. We have symposiums and seminars that focus on BIPOC music and BIPOC composers that are actually coming up to speak to kids and kind of providing sort of a lecture kind of environment, like a more college-oriented speaking engagements every so often for our secondary music students. We have day camps planned. We have all kinds of stuff. The mentorship program is in full effect right now. So a lot going on there. Most of these, again, that are equity specialists overseas. And then also, I want to say we've made some major funding shifts through our BSEP budget to focus on equity measures. And I'm going to go through these really quick. First off is our equity specialist at a full-time employment. We have money set aside. We've been saving forty thousand a year for the coming Berkeley Digital Music Lab so that we can outfit it with the computers and instruments and recording devices that we need. Funding for African-American studies, arts materials and any expenses for the arts within African-American studies, guest speakers that are diversity-focused. There's the mentorship program that I mentioned earlier and a whole bunch of other stuff that I'm kind of double-mentioning there. So you can tell there's a lot going on. And that's kind of it. So I'll put the links to those things in the chat in a minute. I don't know if I'm supposed to have a Q and A part or if I'm good.
No, supervisor Gidlin, there is no Q and A part. This is just our opportunity to receive all of the amazingness that is happening in your program. So thank you so much for your presentation. Also, thank you to our incredible Longfellow students and alum who started us off with that incredible performance and the mission statement, which holds us true to why we are doing this work here. So once again, thank you so, so much for this presentation this evening. And we look forward to seeing the equity the equity cards that you'll put down in the chat for us. So thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Next on our agenda, we will hear a report from closed session from Vice President Babbitt.
Thank you so much. A closed session was called to order at five thirty P M. All members were present. Ty Alper joining us at five forty-five P M. On item three point one, the motion to approve was made by Vice President Babbitt, seconded by Director Sinai, and passed four to zero with Director Alper in absentia. For items three point two and three point two four, the motion to approve for both was made by Director Sinai and seconded by Director Alper, approved unanimously. Lastly, for item three point three, we heard an update and gave direction. Thank you so much. That concludes closed session reporting.
Thank you, Vice President Babbitt. We will now move to our first opportunity for public comment from our community members. As a reminder, this is your opportunity to raise your hand for public comment. Once we have closed the period for you to raise your hand, we won't take any more public comments during this opportunity, but there is a second opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting. If you are a student, as Ms. Barrios instructed, please be sure to put an "s" at the end of your name or a student at the end of their name. That way, we can give you priority to speak. So at this time, please raise your hand if you are interested in speaking for public comment. As of right now, we have seven attendees who are going to speak to the board during this public comment period. Vice President Babbitt, we will give each public commenter three minutes to speak. We will now begin our session with Natasha Berry. Ms. Barrios, can you please promote Natasha Berry, followed by Martha Kane?
Thank you, President Brown. Good evening. My name is Natasha Berry. And this is the first time, I believe, in nearly ten years that I have the opportunity to address you, the board, as a private citizen rather than as the Director of BSEP and Community Relations. And by the way, that was wonderful to see the BSEP-funded VAPA equity work. I officially stepped down from BUSD just a few weeks ago at the end of 2021. As many of you know, I did so in order to attend to the needs of my elderly mother, who unfortunately passed away just before my departure. And that painful reality gives me a particular sympathy for anyone who has made personal and family sacrifices for the good of BUSD. And that includes Superintendent Stevens, who recently announced that he will not renew his contract and referenced his own family needs. So I wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge his dedication, hard work, and sacrifice. This was his first superintendency, and it was a trial by fire, literally, in the fall of 2019. And then, of course, just six months into a superintendency, the COVID pandemic. And on top of all the emergencies, with the daily demands of running a district along with special projects and stakeholder concerns and board priorities. And from my vantage point on the cabinet, he never flinched from shoulder and responsibility from making the difficult decisions. And I saw firsthand his tremendous work ethic as well as his dedication to community engagement. There were town hall meetings nearly every night, at times multiple stakeholder groups, and not just about the pandemic, but about all the issues that the public and the board are concerned about. And I also want to thank my former cabinet colleagues and others who were right there alongside him. When I wrote to say goodbye, I said I felt like I was resigning from a team of superheroes. Each of them has gone to extraordinary lengths to hold Berkeley Unified together, working around the clock twenty-four seven, often to the detriment of their own health and family life. And of course, they're accompanied by so many teachers and principals and classified staff, parents, and volunteers. But ultimately, it's on the shoulders of the superintendent that all these expectations land, and not just the pandemic concerns, but all the hopes and demands that the public and the board has for our nearly ten thousand students, our demands for equity and for excellence. Everything comes to the superintendent, who has to respond to five board directors as his bosses, along with the parents and the staff, and the students to whom he also responds. We have high expectations for the superintendent, and justifiably so. And at the same time, I believe we need to hold ourselves accountable as partners in the success of the district by establishing priorities among all the possibilities and dedicating targeted resources and sustainable resources if a superintendent is to meet the many demands of this job and this community. The superintendent is, after all, not a superhero, but a real person like the rest of us, who will do his best when given the support and opportunity. And it's to that real person that I want to address my thanks, knowing that he will continue until he leaves in June to give his all, just as he has from the day that he arrived. So thank you, Superintendent Stevens, and thank you all.
Thank you so much. And it's great to hear from you and great to continue to see you engage. Thank you for what you shared. We will now go to Ms. Martha Kane, followed by Josh Buswell Charco.
Good evening, board members. And I just want to second Natasha's comments. Exactly my thoughts, Superintendent Stevens, when I heard about the fact that you were stepping down. But I also want to thank all of you board members, all of the educators in BUSD. This has been such a trying two years. But at any rate, I'm here tonight to speak about fourteen point one, which is approval to join K-12 Climate Literacy Curriculum Funding Petition. And as you will probably recall, on November third, when the board was debating whether to pass this resolution, there was a great deal of discussion about funding. And so those of us who are pushing for this, we heard that, and we worked together on this letter with others around the Bay Area and the state to lawmakers, asking them to allocate two hundred million dollars to climate literacy at the state, county, and district levels. So we hope that tonight, the board will vote to be the first school district to sign on to the letter. It's being supported by a large number of community groups focusing on social justice, environment, and education. So I hope you'll vote yes. Thanks.
Thanks so much, Ms. Kane. Next, we are going to go over to Josh Buswell Charco, followed by Sarah Ring.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Welcome.
Wonderful. Sorry about that. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, my name is Josh Buswell Charco. I live in South Berkeley. I have a first and third grader that attend Craigmont. And I'm writing in, or I'm calling in to discuss the content that's being taught to my kids as part of the resolution in support of Black Lives Matter that was passed by this board. And I have three concerns with it. The first is that one of the key pieces of this curriculum is the Thirteen Principles of Black Lives Matter. And I don't see how any board member can think that this content is appropriate for a third grader, let alone a first grader. So just to give one example, the text for Principal Eleven, which is Black Villages, says, "We are committed to disrupting the Western prescribed nuclear family structure requirement." Now, I don't know what percentage of elementary school kids even know what the nuclear family structure is. And if they did, I just don't see how it is the school's place to present this as fact or as a dictum. I just don't see why a first grader should be learning this. And then I think it comes at an expense. You know, the truth is that there are a lot of kids that are sadly falling behind at BUSD. According to C A A S P P data, roughly a third of BUSD students are not meeting expectations on English language or literacy arts. And that number plummets to sixty percent for economically disadvantaged students. And this is not good. You know, these kids are not being served by BUSD. I don't see how this content is helping to mitigate that. And then the third concern I have is I think it's contrary to BUSD's own policies on controversial issues, which says that students should not be presented a political point of view, and they should be taught to separate fact from fiction, and that all sides of controversial issues should be taught. You know, much of this content has no nuance. It doesn't provide the opportunity for children to hear differing perspectives. It's almost written as like biblical scripture and presents the world in these kind of stark Manichean terms. And I just want to be clear, I'm not opposed to my kids learning about Black Lives Matter as a social movement for change. And I'd be wholly supportive of like middle schoolers and high schoolers learning about this social movement and these thirteen principles as part of a current events class and learning about it dispassionately. But that's just not happening now. So anyways, as the parent, I hope the board will consider revisiting this policy and making some amendments to address the matters. and making some amendments, um, to address the matters that I've raised tonight. Thank you very much.
Thanks for, uh, your comment. Isn't typical of the board to respond, uh, to public comment, but Superintendent Stevens, I'm wondering if we'll have an opportunity to explain to our school community the difference between the Black Lives Matter movement and the Black Lives Matter School Week, which we are, uh, having in our district. Maybe when we get to our comments for the superintendent, you could address those in. Thank you. Uh, next, we will move to, uh, Neelam Patel, followed by, uh, Sybala. Oh, I'm so sorry, Sarah Rie is next.
Hello, I'm Sarah Rie. I'm a parent of two children at Malcolm X and one of the authors of the Climate Literacy Resolution that the board passed in November, for which I continue to be so grateful. In doing so, you made Berkeley the first district in the nation to put funding behind that affirmation to empower our students with the context and with the framework to understand the changing climate, as well as solutions to address it. Partly inspired by our work, I wanted to make sure all of you knew that LAUSD, which is the second largest school district in the nation with more than 600,000 students, passed a climate resolution, uh, last week that was partly inspired by ours. Um, so clearly, this is a growing movement and one that Berkeley has already played a special role in. Tonight, I'm here with Martha, um, to also ask you to support the next chapter in this work, which is to allocate state funding for climate literacy work for all students in California by supporting a sign-on letter that will be discussed later, um, which asks state budget holders to allocate funds for this. When it comes up for discussion, I hope you'll agree to add BUSD's name to this letter to show our support and calling for equity and access to climate literacy for all students, and for the state to devote some of its $31 billion in surplus to ensuring teachers get paid for this important work. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Uh, next, we have Neelam Patel. Hi, welcome.
Hi, sorry, am I next?
Yes, you are. Welcome.
I didn't hear it when I was becoming made from panelist, from participant to panelist. Hi, everyone. Um, my name is Neelam Patel. As you can see, I have lots of plants in my background. I am a plant lover. I'm also a science, um, and climate literacy teacher here in, uh, Berkeley Unified. I, I'm coming out tonight to support the, that, uh, Berkeley Unified School Board, uh, places its logo on the, um, on the, the bill that, um, that school board member Laura Babbitt and Vice President Laura Babbitt are presenting on the agenda tonight. Um, I'm the person who spearheaded the Milwaukee Forest Initiative, and we now have three, um, beautiful forests. The forests are three months old. I encourage you to go and walk by them. They're sources of beauty and carbon sequestration in, um, at our schools that any school, um, child can experience. Um, I want to express my great deal of support for climate literacy curriculum within the school district. And, um, I think that this, um, that being part of this bill can, can really help a lot of students. So that's it.
Thank you so much, Ms. Patel. Uh, next, we have , uh, Val Sybala, uh, followed by Matty, uh, Tiplam.
Uh, hello, and thank you very much for the opportunity to comment. I really, um, enjoyed and was impressed by the VAPA presentation and all the hard work that, um, has clearly gone on there for the past seven years, um, and, and longer. But it's, it's, um, it seems a lovely and, uh, productive program. So I am here tonight to commend and thank Vice President Laura Babbitt for speaking out bravely on behalf of Berkeley High or Berkeley Unified Students when she said earlier this week, "I wholeheartedly support lifting mask mandates for students when they are lifted for the rest of Berkeley. It's time to reward our students and families for all the efforts they have put into keeping everyone safe. As I enjoy daily walks for exercise unmasked, it's hard walking by our playgrounds and seeing our students unable to enjoy the same freedoms. I hear the board say over and over again that BUSD students are your top priority. We need to show them that, especially the middle and high schoolers who were left out in the cold last year. So please act boldly as soon as you are able. Thank you."
Thank you. Thank you so much. And our final comment for this, uh, public comment period will come from Matty Tiplam.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you just fine. Welcome.
Hi, good evening. Um, I noticed that there's no, um, COVID-related, uh, item on your discussion or, uh, uh, action agenda for tonight. I was hoping that, uh, when the day comes and that would be, um, that would be the case, it would be a concert celebration. It would be celebrating the fact that COVID is no longer with us. But unfortunately, that's not the case. And, um, to me, it reflects a little bit of, um, the board sort of, uh, picking a somewhat passive position about COVID, maybe taking the eyes, their eyes off the ball. Last week, you did have a, a couple of items relating to COVID. One of them was, uh, a discussion about the COVID mitigation, uh, measures. Uh, and a top discussion was about the outdoor mask item. The board deliberated at length. Opinions were shared in various directions. Um, but no real directive was given to the superintendent, who actually put it to you to give him a directive. If I were him, I wouldn't know what exactly was the directive or the guidance that you gave him. But the bottom line is that even this trivial item, and I'm saying trivial because it's discretionary to BUSD, the outdoor masking, which should be easy to remove. Even this trivial item has been put as pending to be determined in the superintendent's, um, update on, uh, COVID measures. So what was the purpose of all that deliberation? What exactly was the direction that you gave the superintendent? That's unclear. But, um, the reality of it, is there was a little asterisk there in the, in the slideshow that said that this item, uh, is, uh, pending also, um, discussion with the labor partners. I have no idea what, why would that be the case? Um, I wish, uh, the board and the district would discuss with their constituency, uh, parents, as often as they discuss with the teachers, what is best for our children? Because it doesn't seem to be the case. If you wanted to know what the, what the parents actually know about this, it would pretty, pretty easy to, uh, to determine, um, some, some sort of a sign up or Google or something like that, and you would have an answer in probably, uh, minutes or a day. Um, parents already voted with their own actions and the actions about their children by, uh, vaccinating in mass in huge percentages. Yet the district keeps dragging its feet wherever it can, examples abundant last year, and now again about removing the restrictions and taking our children back to normal life. Um, I agree and understand that the pressure should go mainly towards Sacramento in taking K-12 schools off the list that they share with persons in hospitals as the only groups that need to be still, uh, the mask mandate, but ask this district to act now where it can. I may have missed this slide.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but unfortunately, you've reached your time for your public comment. Um, I would like to hear the rest of what you were saying, so I want to invite you back to the second opportunity for public comment, or you can share your written thoughts with the Board of Education. I'm so sorry to interrupt you.
Watching it on my phone. I may have missed the page where it shows, uh, Director Babbitt's, uh, slide. Thank you for listening.
No worries at all. Thank you for being here. Uh, we've reached our final opportunity for the public comment for open session. We will now hear from our, uh, our committees. Is there anyone here for committee comments? Seeing none, we will now move on to union comments. Uh, are there any union comments this evening, Ms. Barrios, to play? Um, and we also have, um, Terry Pastica from the PNO Committee. So why don't we go to, uh, Terry Pastica and Ms. Barrios? Um, that will give you a second to pull up the, the F T comments. Thank you.
Hello, Dr. Stevens and the Berkeley Unified School Board. I am Matt Meyer, President of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. I wanted to take a moment to thank everyone who played a role in keeping our schools open through the Omicron surge. We are finally seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, and our school sites are stabilizing. Our district TSAs became site-based subs. Our teachers gave up their prep time. Our instructional coaches filled in when necessary. Parents volunteered to assist in COVID testing. Our students were flexible as they were in and out of school. Our district administration realized early the gravity of the situation and made thoughtful decisions in consultation with the union to make sure we could continue in-person school each day at every site. We are excited that COVID case rates are steadily dropping and that hopefully the worst is behind us. As guidelines change, we will work in collaboration with the district to make sure we are balancing the health and safety of our students and staff with the right amount of mitigation factors. We are excited that field trips and events can happen more regularly, although city and county guidelines still make many events off limits due to vaccination requirements. Having a fully vaccinated staff and student body will open up the most opportunities with the least amount of disruption. Vaccines are still the number one factor in keeping individuals out of the hospital. The current staff vaccination plan being discussed tonight balances these factors. Moving too swiftly would disrupt learning through staff vacancies, but not passing this policy and timeline will make it impossible to hire on time. The policy being discussed will give the district the time needed to make sure that when school starts next year, all staff will be vaccinated and that any vacancies that occur can be filled. The district and union have been working together, bringing educator voice into important conversations. The BFT Teacher of Color facilitators are working with the Ethnic Studies District TSA to host important conversations about the implementation of our Ethnic Studies program. We have about 20 special ed teachers, speech-language therapists, behaviorists, and psychologists in conversation with the district, looking closely at our special education program and identifying places where we can improve services. We are anticipating work with the African-American Success Project, integrating lessons from the classroom into the overarching program. We are active in conversations on how the district will make budget cuts to deal with declining enrollment. In these collaborations that build, in, it is these collaborations that build buy-in and trust to ensure success of any initiative. Although Dr. Stevens will not be leaving us until the end of the year, I wanted to personally thank him for the tremendous amount of work he has put into our Berkeley community. Working together, we resolved many outstanding issues through contract negotiations. We kept our schools open all year this year and engaged in pragmatic dialogue to support our students and employees. I know he pushed me to think outside the box on many occasions. We wish him luck on his future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Matt Meyer, President of Berkeley Federation of Teachers, for your union comments this evening. We are going to, uh, take a step back just a little bit. If you've been following along, uh, for a long time, you'll know that we have a, a shift in our agenda. And so our committee comments come before our union comments. And so we're going to just go back really quickly to allow Terry Pastica to give, uh, union comments on behalf of the PNO Committee.
Apologies for that, uh, President Brown.
Oh, no worries at all. That was my, I moved past it too quickly.
Associate Superintendent, I'm having, um, issues trying to promote, um, PNO Committee Terry. Wondering if you have any luck trying to promote her?
Yeah, I'm, I'm working on it. Let's see.
Thank you both.
Um, Terry, let's see. We're trying to promote you, saying something about your device. I think it's, she's on an older version of Zoom, and it's not allowing us to promote her. Or, or allowing her to even just unmute. It doesn't look like it's giving me that option.
Um, what we can do is actually, uh, ask, either ask her to call in. Um, and while we're asking her to call in or ask someone if they could call, uh, Terry to, uh, to promote her, but in the meantime, what we can do is we can, um, table this part of the, um, agenda to a later time while we work on our technical difficulties. Um, but since we've already approved the, the agenda as is, there's going to be, need to be a motion, um, to, to, uh, make that adjustment in our agenda. Is there a motion to do that?
I'll move that.
Moved by Director Sinai. Is there a second?
A second.
I think she's there.
There's a bit of unreadiness by Director Babbitt in saying that, uh, Ms. Pastica is now a panelist. So we, um, Director Sinai, will you strike?
I will rescind my motion.
Thank you so much. The motion has been rescined. Uh, and Ms. Pastica, finally welcome.
Okay, thank you. I was trying to.
We were working for you. We were, we were trying to get it ready for you. Thank you for coming.
I'll make it quick. Um, hopefully my internet doesn't crap out. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm from Planning and Oversight, and this is a quick overview of the various questions and comments that have been raised in our last two meetings. Um, as we reviewed BSEP and BARA tax measures, which together represent about 30% of the BUSD budget. Uh, BSEP primarily supports lower class sizes and additional categories, and BARA supports teacher compensation and hard-to-fill positions related to recruitment and retention. So here we go. Um, regarding BSEP and the approximate 33 million that was generated last year, there were several questions about the planned deficit spending that BSEP has been doing at a rate of about 30% or 1 million a year. And if that spending rate continues, it looks like we're going to end this measure with some surplus, but not enough, um, to support current spending in the next, uh, measure at this point. So the basic questions were, what was, what were the plans to address that? Um, how will, what will be the impact of labor negotiations? And how will, um, um, the deficit spending cost be addressed? Uh, then we reviewed the 4.2 COLA, uh, resolution that's on your consent calendar tonight. And the questions were raised around, is COLA increase discretionary or mandatory? And how does the COLA increase square against the deficit spending? And why was the COLA increase needed? And then lastly, related to BSEP, we looked at the largest bucket of spending, which was about 15 million, that goes towards supporting class size reduction, paying teachers and counselor salaries, physically having more classrooms, those kind of expenditures. And the questions we asked there included, how does the declining enrollment, um, how is that being addressed in allocating teachers to classrooms? What's happening to the physical classrooms that are in excess? Um, if the class size goals outlined in BSEP can be obtained with less BSEP dollars, what happens to that residual amount? What's the average teacher compensation now and what's included in direct and overhead costs? And staff noted that, um, the PNO will be looking at the 2022, 23 teacher template at the next meeting, and many of those questions will be addressed, which we look forward to talking about. Then we looked at BARA and the approximate 10 million generated last year to address teacher compensation, recruitment, and retention of hard-to-fill positions. And questions we looked at there are, in the long term, how is BARA impacted by, uh, the decrease in enrollment? And how is it impacted by COLA increases? We also asked, what were the labor negotiation impacts of BARA? And we also asked, prior to BARA, BUSD said teacher salaries were at the bottom of the pay scale for comparable districts. And so we want to know where they are now. Where are the teacher salaries now? And then regarding recruitment and retention. And then regarding recruitment and retention of hard-to-fill position expenditures, a worksheet was provided showing the number of certificated staff hired by ethnicity from 2015 to 2022. And questions asked were real basic, more information related to outcomes in year one of the measure. We wanted to know how is retention being defined and specifically addressed? We wanted to know what teacher credentialing programs BUSD was working with to recruit teachers for these hard-to-fill positions. And lastly, several comments were made about the longstanding issues related to special ed. And it was noted that when the BARA measure was brought to the PNO and to the Berkeley voters, it was specifically identified that special ed was going to be one of those positions addressed, one of those areas addressed. And when the BARA report was provided to the PNO highlighting expenditures in the last year for hard-to-fill positions, it did not address special ed. So the PNO is now asking again, for the third year in a row, for specific data related to special ed. We'd like a go, a perspective going back three years, looking at vacancy, turnover by position, what changes have been made since in BARA? And what recruitment efforts are, are specifically happening? And the PNO recognizes that many of the questions asked were not, information was not immediately available. And staff indicated they would gather and report back to us at the next meeting, which we're very thankful for. And we look forward to the next two-point-oh conversation on these topics. So thank you for circling back, putting me on the agenda. And for the general public, our meeting, our next meeting is February twenty-second, six-thirty, and we invite you to attend. Thanks a lot.
Thank you so much, and thank you for sticking in there with us to give us those incredible comments. So thank you so much for being here this evening. Now is the opportunity for board member comments, and who will be the lucky person to go first? Um, Director Alper, do you mind starting us off, please?
Sure. Thank you, President Brown. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. I wanted to start by recognizing and thanking several other people already have tonight. Dr. Stevens for his leadership of, of the district and, and and to say a word about his, his decision to leave us at the end of this, at the end of the school year. And there'll be time, I know, to say more about him, but I just wanted to say a few words. I was fortunate enough to be president of the board during all of last year. And I got to see his leadership up close, probably as close as, as anybody during, as, as Director Berry mentioned earlier, really a sort of unbelievably trying time, challenging time, emotional time, scary time. And he, you, Brent, led us, led us through that pandemic, or still leading us through that pandemic. As President Brown said in her, in her message to the community, with grace, vision, consistent communication, and a steadfast commitment to keeping our community safe. And, you know, and, and after reading your letter to the community, I was reminded just how much else we accomplished besides, besides keeping the community safe and besides making those hundreds of decisions that, that had to be made during the pandemic, decisions that really are outside of your expertise, outside of the board's expertise, outside of staff's expertise. But, but they were delegated to us to make and we had to make them. So much else got done in this district that we, that we can be proud of and build on, even, even when you're no longer our superintendent. As President Brown also said in her message, we are, we're not saying goodbye just yet. And we do have a lot of work to do left this semester. And, and there will be, I hope, time to say more closer to the end of your term as superintendent. But for now, I did want to publicly thank you for your service to the children and the families of this district. And just tell you that we're very much in your debt and very grateful to you. So thank you. I, I, I wanted to switch gears and say, and make a comment about another issue, which is one that we've heard a little bit of public comment about tonight and gotten a number of emails about. It's not on our agenda tonight, so I'll say a comment now about it. And that's just one of our COVID policies, which is the masking policy for outdoors. And we've gotten a lot of emails, really passionate emails, educated emails on, on both sides. You know, people telling us that we need to keep our masking policies in place, people telling us that we should have gotten rid of them long ago. And there is a differentiation, differentiation between indoor and outdoor, right? And, and we had this conversation, as one of the public members said last time and last meeting, I expressed certain, my belief that we should do away with a policy requiring outdoor masks. And I appreciate all of the communications around the district's reduction and thoughtful reduction in our COVID mitigation policies. I think we're doing it in the right way, a right measured way. And just about the outdoor masking policy, just, I'll just say a couple of words about it. One is just to be clear, it's up to us. The city is not making us require masks outdoors. The state is not requiring us to require masks outdoors. Again, as I said last time, the science doesn't support requiring masks outside. We've said all along, we want to follow the science for a community that follows the science, that follows public health guidance. No public health officer is requiring us to do this. As far as I know, no public health officer is recommending that we do it. And if we got, did away with it, it would still be optional for, for children and families to wear masks outdoors. I think there's no place on earth where it would be less stigmatized to be wearing a mask than, than Berkeley. So that's not a concern, I think, we should have. I, I've heard people say that the kids might lose their masks. To me, that seems like an adult problem, and I feel like it's one that we can figure out. Kids can put their masks in their pockets. They can, in the beginning of the pandemic, we were concerned that kids wouldn't be able to learn how to wear masks. And they obviously have. I think they can learn how to take them on and off. And, and we have a large supply of surgical masks that we can provide to kids if they do lose them. And it can't be that, that because of that, as long as we have an indoor mask policy, we will also have to have an outdoor mask policy. That's not a principle basis for keeping an outdoor masking policy. We all just watched the Super Bowl with seventy thousand screaming, eating adults packed into the stadium, none of them wearing masks. And I don't think our children should be required to wear them either. So that's my, that's my feelings. And I know we maybe are in slightly different places on the board, but I wanted to make my views on that particular policy clear. Thanks, President Brown.
Thank you, Director Alper. We will go to Director Sinai next.
Thank you, President Brown. I would also like to start off by echoing the appreciations for Dr. Stevens. I think that I respect your decision and understand where you're coming from. I think we will, we will miss your steady, you know, calm approach to crises. And, you know, I just want to say that your commitment to steer the district, to steer our ship steadily through the last, you know, three years, we, we, everybody knows how difficult it is. But you did, you move, you move with grace. And even, you know, when there's disagreement and when there's conflict, it's, you know, the ability to work through it. I think the partnership that you've got, you know, while people may wonder why we prioritize our partnership with our labor partners, without our labor partners, we would not have school. Without the best quality teachers and staff that we strive to have, our kids would not have the learning environment that we want. So it's not about keeping our labor partners happy. It's about keeping our labor partners as partners in a way that we can best serve our students. And I think you hold that, that, that principle dear and really respect the work that we do across the table with our teachers and our staff and our other administrators. And I thank you for that, because that's not always the case. And I think when we look at districts around the region right now, I think the partnership that you and our labor partner leadership, you know, has been able to establish, have helped us come through this bruised and battered, but in one piece and working, you know, cohesively together. And I can't express enough appreciation for that. I, I really want to echo that this is not goodbye, so I'm not going to say anything more. But, you know, continue to, you know, look forward to the, the road ahead, which is still super packed with a lot of work. I am really looking forward to hearing the special ed presentation. So I'll hold off on any of my comments, but I think a lot of us, and, and listening to even the report from the PNO Committee, there's a lot of interest in making sure that, you know, our special ed program is really meeting the needs of our students as well as being financially, you know, responsive. I want to appreciate Mr. Gidlin and the VAPR program. How inspiring it is to see our kids perform. And I want to thank our voters for making the BSEP measure happen and our ability to provide a thoroughly enriching music program. And I'm very inspired by Mr. Gidlin's commitment to equity and the demonstration of the outreach to recruit teachers of color. And to see a difference of five percent at the beginning of seven years ago and now forty percent. I think there's some lessons learned there. And I think we need to look at what is, what is happening there that's, that's creating that success? And how do we expound upon that across the district? I think his outreach in HBCUs is just, I think what he's doing is really working. And we keep saying, we want to take the things that are working and take them to broader scale. Just the last thing I think I will say is I am going to have to change my office hours for March due to a travel conflict. But I will let, at the next board meeting, I'll announce the, the new date, but, and I'll update the website. But I normally do them the second Sunday of the month. And I just want to let folks know that in March I'll be adapting it. And I think that is it. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Sinai. Director Vasudeva, are you ready for your comments?
I'm ready, President Brown. Thank you. And thank you all for coming today. I am also especially grateful to former Director Berry for starting us off with her appreciation of our superintendent and staff's work this year. I couldn't agree with her more. And I also want to join my colleagues in thanking Dr. Stevens for his leadership throughout this pandemic and wish him all the best on his next endeavor. Dr. Stevens has done a great job leading us through the pandemic. And as all these, all this changing guidance has been happening, he continues to authentically engage our families, students, and staff, and has made sure that throughout every step of the way, everyone is well informed of all of our different mitigation efforts. Through his leadership, we've been able to stay open, even in times when other neighboring districts closed during the Omicron surge. Thank you, Dr. Stevens. I've appreciated your leadership during probably one of the most difficult times in history to serve as a superintendent. I've also appreciated working closely with you to meet with our various stakeholder groups. I know that you work late. I've joined you in so many late meetings with our affinity groups. And even when you don't have all the answers, I've appreciated the time that you've made to listen to constituents and just to hear them out. So I'll miss that and I'll miss working with you. And thank you again, and I wish you all the best. I also wanted to echo my appreciation for the VAPR presentation tonight. It was great to see Mr. Houston, because I hear so much about him from my son Kavi, who learned how to play the viola from Mr. Houston. And neither my husband nor I know how to play any instruments, because we grew up in low-income families and never had access to music education. So it's really beautiful to see what an impact our program has made in my, in my own family too. So I wanted to just thank you, and it was so great to hear our students play. That was definitely the highlight of my evening. I also want to thank Mr. Gidlin for your equity-focused presentation. I've appreciated learning about the history of our culturally responsive music education and had the pleasure of touring Longfellow last week. So shout out to the Longfellow community and thank you to the two, two students who spent the morning touring me around and taking me to their favorite teachers too. That was a lot of fun. But while I was at Longfellow, I got to see the posters for Loctire de Longfellow, the mariachi group on campus. And so I'd love to continue just to learn how we engage our monolingual families about our music program as well. It was wonderful to see that up close and personal. Uh, I'm watching very closely. I know that my colleague, Director Alper, made some comments about masking. So I'll join in making, making my own comments and kind of where I am on that. Uh, I'm watching very closely to see what's happening at the state level regarding mask mandates for schools. We know that California will keep its indoor mask mandate for K to twelve schools in place, at least through the end of the month. Again, that's different from outdoor masking. But masking continues to be an important part of our COVID-19 mitigation efforts, especially indoor masking. I want to thank our superintendent and fellow colleagues, because it's through our strong COVID-19 mitigation efforts that we have kept students and education workers safe in our schools. I want to remind everyone that although we want things to get back to normal, and I want things to get back to normal, we're still in a pandemic phase, not in an endemic phase. Those are two very different situations. Our test positivity rate in Berkeley is two-point-eight-six percent, whereas last June, our positivity rate was significantly lower at point sixteen percent. Though our positivity rate is on a decline, we're not out of the woods and we're certainly not back at our lowest point, at our lowest rates throughout the history of the pandemic. Furthermore, child hospitalization rates have tripled in January twenty-twenty-two compared to the January twenty-twenty-one surge. And I don't say this to scare the public. My intention is to make it clear that because we have had strong mitigation in place, we've been able to keep our schools open and that we should proceed with caution as we discuss public health decisions impacting our students and our staff. So thank you all for coming tonight. I also echo what Director Sinai said, and I'm looking forward to our special education workshop. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Vasudeva. We will now move on to Vice President Babid.
Thank you so much. In the interest of time, I will be as brief as possible and say that I definitely echo the sentiments shared for our appreciation to you, Dr. Stevens, during your time here in BUSD. I do support taking off masks for outdoors. And I also do appreciate that our students have kept them on with so many smiles on their face. We can see the smiles in their eyes. Many of them are still just enjoying being in-person learning. And so I want to appreciate them and let them know that we do see them and we do honor them. And we are grateful for the sacrifices that they have made to keep everyone safe. Lastly, I want to just make sure that all of our community partners are aware that tomorrow evening is the focus group on the African American Success Framework for community organizations and partnerships, so that we can really build those bridges. I am grateful for our city council members who have agreed to come, our city managers, and all of the different organizations, because we do want to make sure that we build those bridges between our schools and our cities and make sure that our efforts are aligned. So again, if you are out there and you are a part of community organizations, please come out tomorrow. The link is on the website. And I will save any other comments for the presentations. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Babid. I will now call myself for my comments this evening. I'd like to, of course, thank everyone for coming out for public comment. And again, for the incredible presentation that we had today from the Visual and Performing Arts Department, with the special presentation from our young people. It's always really incredible to have our students, our scholars in our board meeting with us, speaking to us, but more importantly, showing off their incredible talents and, and the things that make us Berkeley. And so thank you again to our students for, for coming this evening. As you all know, today is the sixteenth day of February, which means it is the sixteenth day of Black History Month. I'd like to give a huge appreciation to all of our board directors and our superintendent and cabinet for having our wonderful backgrounds on that support BUSD celebration of Black History Month. Director Sinai has her on, hers on her wall, so you can see it back there in the background. But these, and Associate Superintendent Aurelio changed his as well. But these are really incredible graphics and like to thank Tricia's team for being able to put these together for us. But we are super excited to celebrate Black History. And if you know, during Black History Month, I always like to give a, a brief Black History Month fact. And so tonight, I am excited to honor Susan King Taylor, who is known for being the first of many things. She is known for achieving many firsts, as I said, including being the first nurse. But she's also known for overcoming adversity and helping people elevate out of slavery. One of my favorite things about Susan King Taylor is that she is a strong literary leader, or was a strong. is a strong literary leader or was a strong, excuse me, literary leader. Um, and many people don't know this, but she's also noted as noted to be the first um black or African American teacher and noted for her work that she did as being the reading instructor for um the regiment of former former slaves. And so I am as a as a teacher, as an educator, I am proud to honor Susan um Susan King Taylor this evening as my Black History hero. So um I would also like to join the rest of my board colleagues and thank Superintendent Stevens for his uh incredible work that he has done in the three years that he's been here with us in Berkeley Unified School District. I know that this is not our time to say goodbye uh right now. However, um, this is our time to take the opportunity to honor you and to appreciate you. Of course, we stand by and fully support the decision um that you made that I know was not an easy decision for you to make. However, um, we we support you and appreciate all of the waves that you made um here in BUSD from the strong leadership that you provided to us, uh helping us to face this pandemic head on um as well as your commitment to improving our educational outcomes for our students. And the work that you have done in BUSD is meaningful and has provided us with a strong foundation. And so I'm appreciative to work in partnership and in collaboration with you um as the board president for uh what has been three months and what will be a couple more months. But as a board director, I'm grateful for the opportunity to learn from you um and to grow under your leadership. And so thank you, Superintendent Stevens. I know that we will have months and months of of celebrations and moments for gratitude and appreciation. But I had to, of course, take this opportunity this evening just following your uh your our joint announcement to uh give you my my appreciation um and echo the sentiments of my school board colleagues. So thank you so much, Superintendent Stevens, uh for all that you've done and all that you will continue to do. Now I'll turn it on over to you, Superintendent Stevens, so you may give your comments for this evening.
Um, thank you very much, President Brown. Um, I I think you stopped just short of promising to pay for that celebration.
I have a teacher salary, you'd know I'm broke.
But I'm looking forward to it. Um, and I I I do want to offer my words of thanks to every one of you. Um, uh, coming to the decision to step away from Berkeley, what was a really tough one. It was many weeks in the making and and took a lot of through private conversations with family and friends about what would be best at this moment, particularly for my family after three difficult years. Um, so I am looking forward to finishing uh the next three months on a on a strong note. We've got lots of really good work in front of us, and I look forward along with the team uh to engaging with the board and the community to complete it and and helping the district um through a successful and smooth transition. Um, because you started us off in this direction, I want to call out Polly Murray. I don't know if you know that name. Um, she was a remarkable African American lawyer who uh really wrote the Brown case twelve years before Brown was settled. Um, she was a young law student. Uh, she was working with Thurgood Marshall uh and did most of the intellectual work um to be able to lay the foundation for the Brown desegregation case in the fifties. Um, an absolutely remarkable individual and one who has inspired me for a very long time. So I'm taking a cue from you, President Brown, and and want to offer a call out. Um, for members of our community who are curious about what's going on in schools for Black History Month, I really do encourage you to check out several pages on our website. Um, we've been hard at work sort of creating resources for our community and educators related both to Black Lives Matter in Schools Week, which was the first week in February, uh as well as Black History Month. Um, you can go and check out pages on our website uh that are entitled affinity based programs. There you'll get a good sense of the many different programs that we offer, not only to African American families, um but as well the Latinx families uh and other families. Um, you can also find a special website devoted to the African American Success Initiative, uh relatively new work here in the district that we've been able to accomplish during these hard days of the pandemic. Uh, and then please check out our gorgeous ethnic studies website. Um, this is a resource in development, uh but it is a collaborative effort by our teachers uh to pull together a variety of resources for instruction in our classrooms. Um, so for folks who would like to learn more about what's happening in our schools and the kind of teacher led collaborative work that is um leading to curriculum, um, you can find all of that on our website. Uh, what I'd like to do is just um uh turn um sort of my comments over to COVID uh and talk a little bit about um sort of steps the district has been taking to scale back from the very intensive Omicron level mitigations that we put in place over the month of January. Um, we devoted our last board meeting uh to a discussion about how quickly to move towards a reduced set of mitigations. Um, given that our case rates in our community and schools are declining, um although we should note are significantly higher than they ever were at any other point in the pandemic. Um, last week, uh when we were together again, uh last together, um, we described that starting on February twenty eighth, we would begin a scaled back set of mitigations um that include increased permissions for field trips, um depending on vaccination requirements for particular locations, um permitting uh increased access for classroom volunteers to the classroom, permitting uh going back again to in-person faculty meetings, permitting community events and open houses, um uh allowing prom and other uh sort of dance activities to take place um as well as moving away from KN ninety-five masks, uh which continue to be available on our campus back towards the surgical or cloth masks that we were more accustomed to. Um, all of those um sort of uh scaled back mitigations went out in uh in the form of a letter to the community last Friday. Um, and we also signaled in our last board meeting uh that we would both ask for guidance from the board about how quickly we should move towards sort of scaled back mitigations and particularly towards um removing the mask requirement outdoors. We signaled in that board meeting uh that we had very important and necessary work to do to consult with our labor partners um on uh the sort of potential impact of uh lifting the outdoor mask requirement for all of our students. Um, so this evening, I'm I'm pleased to be able to announce that we anticipate on the basis of several things. Again, board feedback about the relative pace of the scale back, uh declining cases on our own campuses and consultation with our unions uh that uh starting February twenty eighth, we are going to lift the outdoor mask requirement uh on all of our campuses. Uh, so this gives our schools about a week and a half to continue their planning. This is not new to them. We've been working with our principals now for several weeks on this. Uh, we'll continue that work to support a set of local procedures uh related to how to take care of those masks at our elementary schools. Uh, we also have abundant supplies of surgical masks, and so we'll make sure that those are readily available in the event that for a short period of time, they're getting lost more frequently. Uh, we will commit to the uh to getting out written communication to our community tomorrow about the February twenty eighth date and the removal of the outdoor mask requirement. Um, uh, and of course, we will share that for families and children who choose to continue to wear masks outdoors, that that is, of course, an option. Um, uh, I think one of the board members mentioned that there should be no stigma attached with continuing to wear masks. Uh, and that's the environment, very environment that we seek to achieve in the district. I'd like to talk a little bit about indoor masking because this is a different matter. Um, it was always the case that Berkeley voluntarily adopted an outdoor mask requirement for a variety of reasons uh that included making the test to stay program uh a possibility during all of the last semester. Uh, and many hundreds of students were able to stay in school because we both had a robust testing program and because all of our close contacts were masked, those indoors and those outdoors. So it was the right decision. I think it benefited many students measurably to be able to stay on campus through that semester. As of right now, um although the indoor mask requirement has been lifted in most settings, uh it continues to be a requirement in the K twelve educational setting that students wear masks indoors. Uh, and there has been no change in C D P H's requirements for school settings. Uh, we understand right now that the California Department of Public Health intends um to come back to the public on February twenty eighth, the same date I just signaled, uh and that we would expect some updated guidance as it relates to indoor masking in school settings. At this point, we don't know what that updated updated guidance will be. Um, we're hearing through channels that very likely um that updated guidance would take effect sometime in the month of March, perhaps mid-March, uh giving districts a number of weeks to plan for a change, maybe um in indoor masking requirements. So to members of the community who are eager to see additional change, please know that there has been no change in the status of indoor mask requirements by C D P H. We're expecting that we may get additional guidance on the twenty eighth with some time towards the implementation of that guidance. Uh, we'll continue to offer updates to the board and to the community as we learn more from the state about this. Um, and then, of course, we will consult with our labor partners um and then take into account um the overall sort of sentiment in our community, uh which we receive frequently in the form of emails and other communications, uh both those who hope to see us speed up the reduction in mitigations and those who have particular health concerns. Uh, the other thing that's very important to keep in mind in all of this is that we're going to continue to uh maintain our testing program. Uh, our contact tracing program will remain intact and and if there is a change in indoor masking, and I say if, um, that we will continue to maintain those um those safety protocols um uh as additional ball work against transmission. So um with that, I'm going to turn it back to you, President Brown. Thank you so much for offering to pay for that party. I cannot wait. I know it's, I know it's going to be a big one.
From your lips to God's ears. Thank you, Superintendent.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
Okay, next we will move on uh to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to uh approve the consent calendar?
I'll move it.
Moved by Director Alper. Is there a second second by Vice President Baden, Miss Fario to communicate this call the role?
Director Vasudeva?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Vice President Babid?
Yes.
President Brown?
Yes, thank you so much. Uh, for our first discussion item uh for this evening, I am so excited um about our board workshop. If you've been following along, you know that we've implemented board workshops this year. And tonight's board workshop is um about special education. And so um our executive director Sped uh as well as our staff will be walking us uh board directors and you, the community, through a special workshop uh that will focus on the continuum of special education services, um our data snapshots, a student and site I E P T testimonies, areas of growth, future projects, as well as fiscal impacts. And so I am excited again for this presentation, and I'd like to welcome our special education department for this workshop.
Thank you, President Brown. I'm going to introduce Sean Ransinger, the Executive Director of Special Education. He brought a whole team with him, and I know he will be introducing to everyone. So thank you, Special Education Team. We are very excited about this. And Sean, I will take it away. I think you're muted, Sean.
Man, how many times have I done that? Uh, has it, can everybody see our PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, board members, Superintendent Stevens, educators, students, families and the larger community. Thank you for this opportunity to to continue the ongoing conversation. We are um on how we are serving our students with disabilities in BUSD. I've had the privilege of being here for about a year and a half, feels like five. Uh, and I continue to be impressed daily with the resilience and advocacy of our staff, children, parents and community advocates to ensure that we are creating safe and rigorous learning communities for all of our children. Uh, yes, we have much work to do, and I continue to believe we are in the right, we have the right people. Um, this is the right time and we're in the right space to do this work. We all want public, the public school system to serve all of our children. It's by far a perfect system, and we know we need to do better for our communities of color and our students with disabilities. We hope tonight's conversation will highlight some of the great work Sped Services is doing in cooperation with all our partners and seek solutions for the many challenges we need to face. So let's go ahead and jump in. Uh, you already gave a little bit of it, uh President Brown, but we're going to do a little talk a little bit about our continuum of special education services in Berkeley and some of the programmatic details. We're going to do a bit of a data snapshot. Uh, we're going to have some testimony from one of our students and our site I E P team. And we have some areas of growth and potential future projects that we'll be discussing this evening. Um, as you can see, I've brought a very large team um that I'm going to introduce now. Uh, so I really can't say enough how lucky I am to have this talented team. Um, not, they not only serve our sites daily, they also have helped shape and mold the vision of special education services. Um, through only, there are only a few here to present, um but it's um really important for us to recognize the folks who are working hard to support our school sites and I E P teams. Um, so on the left here, I have our central administrative team. And then on the right here, I have our TSAs, um our board certified behavior analysts um and our lead psychologists that every day serve our sites. Um, so I'd like to introduce um a few folks. We have uh joining us tonight, we have Principal Carrillo. We have Supervisor Floran Palma, Supervisor Lena Sweeney, Su- Supervisor Kristen Hardy. Uh, we have our lead psychologist, Shayna Stumpfig. Uh, we have Principal Canyon and our mild moderate education specialist, Nishel Pete. Um, and we'll also get to meet our special guest student in a brief moment. So it's always really important, for some reason, it looks like we lost our um our vision, but we'll just go with commitments. Um, our mission and commitments always are always the guidepost we come back to, remind us of why we are here. Uh, we know the year is a roller coaster ride, and we always come back to this um to our mission. Um, and this year, Special Education Services has made uh made these these commitments below as a way to guide our work um with our school sites and our in our I P teams. Um, so in our presentation, you will see a lot of these commitments. Uh, we work hand in hand with our I P teams and setting high standards and expectations for our students with disabilities through P D and council. We guide professional development. We guide our I P teams as they work to implement procedural requirements of I D A, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. We advocate and support the inclusion of students with I E Ps in the general education setting. We continue to educate on BUSD's child find responsibility in the manner consistent with Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And we empower our site teams to develop strong relationships with families using a cultural lens um to ensure students are successful academically and socially emotionally. We know we have a lot of work to do with that, but these are commitments that we make to the community. Oh, there they are. Just needed to push there one more time. Um, so this next slide is uh does full inclusion work? I don't know how many times I've been asked this, and it really is a question that we could um debate for days. It definitely keeps me up at night. Um, there are many studies that show that inclusion benefits all students socially and academically. Um, there's a link down there. Oh, actually, I'll shoot a link later. Learning together makes us all better people. Um, but we also must be cautious. Full inclusion can't be viewed as a static system, but rather an evolutionary process that shifts based on student need. Full inclusion is going is going to look different in every school and every classroom for every student. Full inclusion is better understood as a mindset and a framework for educating students with and without disabilities. Some students may need time being pulled in a separate setting to set to meet their educational needs. Some may do better with their peers with push and support. The I E P is team is who decides this. Our job in BUSD is to continue to pay attention to the qual- these quality indicators. So a few examples are making sure all of our sites have an inclusion vision. Do we have a collaborative planning time set aside? Uh, do we have a variety of different um delivery models like co-teaching, flexible grouping, collaborative consultation, like our cost teams? Uh, students with disabilities need to have access to extracurricular activities, just as their peers, clubs, school plays, sports, student government. Uh, we'll see example of that with our student um coming up. Um, and we always remind ourselves that families are full members of the I E P team and are welcome in the planning process for their children. What is not a good, non-negotiable when it comes to inclusion is the expectation desire that everyone belongs and learns together. Um, so down below here, you can visit our website as more of our history of inclusion, BUSD. It's a longstanding um history here. Um, and in two thousand seventeen, there was a fiscal study done by Dr. Glassby that um I have read a few times coming in as the director, and there's lots of great advice in there and things. I don't agree with everything, uh but most of it is pretty on point, and there's work that we've been doing along those lines. With that, I want to introduce one of our students um and just a a point of reference in where it says CAS. Uh, he mentions CAS, it's Communication Arts and Sciences overview, and that's one of our Berkeley High School small community cohorts. I'm hoping that this is going to work without glitch. We all see that? Excellent.
Hello, Superintendent Stevens and members of the board. My name is Kaleo Crowley. I'm in eleventh grade in CAS at Berkeley High School. I'm getting good grades and feel competent in myself as a learner. I also have an I E P. I have autism, muscular dystrophy and epilepsy. I have an inclusion student in Berkeley Unified since kindergarten. I started at Oxford in January ten eleven during my kindergarten year. It was my first time being included in a general education class. Within a few weeks, I started to read and write. I made friends. Within a few weeks, I started to read and write. I made friends. I had a strong IEP team to support me. It was not always easy. I had a lot of seizures. Walking got harder for me and sometimes I had meltdowns. But in the fifth grade, my general education teacher, Miss Alima, really believed in me and made herself part of my inclusion plan. Fifth grade was my most successful and fun year at Oxford. I went to Willard for middle school. Willard, I started to face some big dangerous challenges. In sixth and seventh grade, I was often unsafe. My behavior was dysregulated and I missed a lot of class. But my IEP team never gave up on me. In eighth grade, a new IA was assigned to me. She was the right support for me. With her help, I turned my middle school life around. I began engaging in class war and my behavior improved. I made a good friend. So far, that school has gone really well for me. I still get support from my teachers. IA, Gaze Manager, Service Dog, occupational therapist, speech therapist, physical therapist, and I have the TE teacher. My parents helped me a lot at home. I try to be a good student. I am on time to my classes, pay attention, and complete all of my work. Last year, I won the Mayor's Award in the CAS Most Accurate Award. I continue to be included in three general education classes. My goal is to be more independent. I am thankful that I have been included. Please continue to give other kids like me a chance to participate in general education. With the right supports and a team that believes in us, we all can thrive. Thank you.
I need to learn how to do that in my own presentation. I probably watched that four times and every time it makes me tear up. So I'm really proud of that team at Berkeley High School and BUSD for the work they've done. Another example of I saw of of really adapting to the needs of our students was the the Brooklyn High School elevator was broken for a couple of days and instead of, you know, hey, we can't get them up the stairs, let's go ahead and bring the entire class down to the auditorium. So they set up the class down there. So again, just an example of what a full inclusion model can do for a child and we should be proud of that work. Oh, Lord. All right, can I still see my screen? All right, excellent. Okay, so I want to talk quickly about this this concept of educational benefit and why it's important. Really, it's the the crux of the work that we do in special education services. We know that providing educational benefit is really our ultimate responsibility for our students. All of IDA mandates and compliance requirements are an attempt to move IP teams to educational benefit. Whether we're providing ed benefit is is really at the heart of special education. It's really a central question in most of our legal cases. Not only do we need to provide educational benefit, we also need to prove that we're providing. So that's why we have progress reports. That's why we have our annual IP meetings. That's why we have our triennial meetings. It's to really report out progress and adjust goals and services depending on that student need. Those service a child that's that's in fifth grade, needs change drastically when they move the end of the year, all the way up to high school. So we're always adapting and adjusting. What is really clear is that the US Supreme Court left it up to really to IP teams to decide if 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 we were providing educational benefit. And that's what makes it really a challenge. In the case of Riley versus US Supreme Court, 1983, the IP setup, you know, really we must provide some educational benefit. But it was very, that was very loose language and, you know, caused a lot of court battles. So then Andrew versus Supreme Court came back and they said, well, every child must have a chance to meet challenging objectives. Must be appropriately ambitious in light of the child circumstances. So you can see that language is just like, what is that supposed to mean? So and 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 I think really what the Supreme Court want to do is make it purposely vague. And that's why the IEP team comes in. And again, that's where those legal challenges come in and why the relationship between the IEP team and that family and that the family understands their part of the team is extremely important. So I just wanted to explain that basis because this is really what the crux of the work that we do is. So with that, I'm going to stop talking and I really want to introduce the Craigmont Elementary IP team. I was there a couple of weeks back and very impressed with the work that I saw happening there. So I'd like to introduce Principal Cannon and Nishel Pete are mild mod inclusion specialists. And what I can do is present their slides and then you guys just tell me move forward.
Okay, it was I was it was hard to unmute me, Sean, sorry. Good evening. I'm Candy Cannon and I'm principal at Craigmont School, elementary school, and I'm here with one of our fabulous inclusion specialists, Ms. Nichelle Pete. So Nichelle and I will be presenting our rather long slideshow, but we're going to streamline it for you tonight. But please go and take a look at it at a later on. So next slide, Sean, please. We're here to talk about our BUSD Special Ed Program from a Craigmont point of view. Inclusion and a least restrictive environment are at the we do in BUSD and especially at Craigmont. Every student at Craigmont is a general ed student first. We are all dragons. Next. There's a slide missing there, so let me go back. You're missing our, there, nope.
Oh, Lord.
We're out of, we're out of whack with you. So here we are.
Okay.
This is most of our Craigmont Special Ed Team. Yeah, as you can see, it's a large group of people that work with all of our students. Our general education teachers are not pictured, but of course they are part of our team. We all work together to ensure success for all of our students. Next slide, please. Keep going professions. Thank you. So listed here are the professions of of all the members of our team. As you can see, it's a lot of people that work with our kids here at Craigmont. So I'm going to pass it over to Nichelle next.
Next slide, please.
I don't know what does matter with my arrow, but I'm just going to have to go forward and back one.
Going to parents.
There we go. So parents are one of our most important members of the team, right? Because parents know their children in a different lens than we do as professionals, right? So we make sure that we check in with them every step of the way in our IP process.
Next slide.
And students, right? They are the key. We do our IP process to make sure that we are teaching them ways and strategies that they can become better self advocates and that they can know what their needs are and advocate for it in every capacity. Next slide. Okay, so this is a list of some of the meetings that we have and how often that we we meet as a team. So like our cost team meets once a week. We do collaborative time with the general ed and the special ed team once a week as well. We have our IA meetings twice a month and we also have our PLC meetings twice a month with office hours on the weeks that we don't actually meet as well as those other meetings. Okay, so one of the key things that we've been doing at Craigmont is streamlining the process, right? So we want to make sure that we're serving our our students with full inclusion and least restrictive environment at the top of our forefront. So that's making sure that the students who need support are first getting intervention before they're placed into special education, right? The whole thing is to make sure that they're with their peers or getting the services that they need at the at the capacity that they need.
Next slide.
So a lot of the tools that we tend to use to make sure that we are collaborating with each other are a lot of the Google tools like the Google Calendar, Google Drives, Google Docs, so that way we can share information throughout the day and even when we're not meeting in person or through Zoom as COVID does now. And one of the things that we're doing in our cost team is we're doing a book club, right? Everybody loves reading. No, me, just me? Okay, but we're doing a book club and we're are learning and that's the key to us as professionals is that we're continuously learning. So this is the book that we're learning right now. We're going through, we're discussing ways that we can implement it at our school, at our site level, how we can do it at a grander level all throughout BUSD. So yeah, look for our action plans soon. As case managers, so me and my counterpart, Thea, we do the IA schedule every day. So that includes if our IAs are out and we try to make sure that we're covering all of our students to the best of our ability so we can make sure that they're getting the best support possible. And these are just some of the characteristics of our team members. The keys, the key ones that I really want to highlight are flexibility, organizing teamwork, right? Those three things in itself can make a great and effective team. But add all the rest of this in and, you know, I'm going to cheer for Craigmont. We're doing it. Go us. Another thing to keep in mind is balance. As we all know, we can't pour into someone else's bucket when ours is empty. So it's us as a team member reminding each other to take some breaks, to have those deep breaths the same as we do with our students, right? Have that balance and have that mental wellness so we can help each other and our students. This is a slide of Thea, who I mentioned my counterpart earlier, of her daily schedule. And as you can see, we're busy, busy, busy. Right? Here is my schedule as well as where is my monthly calendar. It's forever changing. Remember that key flexibility. You're going to have some surprise meetings. You're going to have some parents who want to meet with you today, some that want to meet with you in 30 days. Sometimes you have to be flexible and maybe your student is having a bad day and we need to shift things around and go support them in a classroom and then meet with the other student later. So it's all about being flexible and making sure that we're supporting all of our students. These are just some ways that we feel as a team that we can make special education better in general across BUSD.
We'll give just a couple of seconds for people to read it.
And so I just want to make sure that full inclusion means that student that the student is a general education student first. I know I said that at the beginning, but I want to make sure that we leave, we 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 leave with that. A general education student first with support from the special ed team. Special education in Berkeley is amazing because our full inclusion program, because of our full inclusion program and our wonderful caring educators. Those those are those that's what guides us here at Craigmont and guides all the special ed programs are programs in in all of our Berkeley schools. I'll give you a minute to read that one. Next slide, Sean. And thank you. And remember to please take care of yourself. Again, like Nichelle said, we can't fill up someone else's bucket when our bucket is empty. So thank you very much. Thank you very much, Nichelle, for being for being with me this evening and and for, thank you to our full special ed team here at Craigmont. Thank you.
So again, a huge thank you to Principal Cannon and Ms. Pete. This is a one of our points of discussion where the board, we invite the board to bring comment, ask questions. So we'll open it up.
Thank you so much. I will open it up to the board directors, but before I do, I just want to, of course, echo the appreciation of Sean for Ms. Cannon and also for Ms. Pete, who is my classmate and graduated from Berkeley High together in 2009. So it's good to see you appear recycling your success. We'll go to Vice President Babid and then we will move on to Director Vasilev and Director Saini.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that presentation and those details and do hope that we can get a copy of your slides, Principal Cannon. Really appreciate you all making sure we know what is needed and what improvements can make. So would love to be able to digest that further. And then one of the points that you highlighted was around parent engagement and making sure that parents are involved throughout the entire process. Can you just tell me a little bit more about how you're ensuring that that happens? And I'm asking from the context of of hearing quite often families say that the same day they hear all this information in their IP, they're being asked to sign off. And they're not really feeling that level of engagement as most of us would hope they would feel. So if you could tell us a little bit more about that, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to let one of the teachers or the program supervisors, Nichelle, sorry, go.
Sorry. One of the things that I tend to do at Craigmont at the beginning of the school year, before classes even start, I'll reach out to all families to check in to make sure that whatever happened over the summer, we can meet with full force when school starts. I always send out updates and emails through text message using Google Voice. Because that's, you know, professional. And also I always take in all of the emails that I receive throughout the school year before we meet in annuals for IEPs. And I take all those considerations in when we're proposing goals and new things. When we meet, we give the parents ample time to say, you know, hey, I don't disagree with this. I agree with it. Or I would like to take more time to kind of digest it. And then when the IP is sent out, they have seven days to kind of talk to us about it and how we can make revisions. So the IP is a living document. Nothing is ever permanent. So immediately we are always asking for our parents to give us input and then we can always make amendments and change.
Yeah, one of the, just to add, one of the expectations that I've sent out as the director is that, you know, we need to send out ahead of time, a couple of days ahead, the draft goals as well as the agenda to our families. So that's another way that we give opportunity for families to read these and and look them over. Of course, sometimes those things don't happen and it's up to us as IP teams to help alleviate that and give that time. I've been in many IP meetings where I do not hear the IP team say, we need you to sign this right now. Oftentimes they'll say, no, please, you know, look it over, give your feedback. Parents always have the right to write in their feedback, how they feel about it, and then we can make updates or we can or in some in some instances, we do defend that, you know, these are the, we feel like these goals are 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 good for the student. But we always encourage, we know family members are members of the IP team, equal members of the IP team.
Director Vasilev.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you so much for this first part of the presentation. I know it's going to continue and and get more data focused soon, but I just wanted to thank the whole team and loved seeing our student Cleo. He, that was just so beautiful and really touching. I'm having a hard time just kind of holding it together. It was really beautiful. Thank you so much for having his voice shine throughout the presentation. I also just wanted to focus on two things that the Craigmont team said. First off, I love the Craigmont team, very personal for me to support my youngest son and it's beautiful to see you here tonight. The two things that I wanted to stress that I do that I do feel really strongly in BUSD that we do right is that families do feel, you know, like they're full members of the IP team and there's and that's special. I loved the point on one of the slides that special education is a living entity, right? That it's something that's changing, that's evolving, that, you know, and changing throughout the years. Someone who's had multiple IP meetings this year, I know that that it's it is very much a living entity and you're a part of a team together and how important that is. I have a question around culturally. Sometimes I hear from monolingual families, so and I and I think especially if you're just starting off in the process, it can feel like an intimidating journey, right? There's a lot of kind of inside baseball. There's a lot of, you know, that's that's talked about and you're hearing, you know, specialists read reports in a, you know, a very specific way legally, a very specific way. Can can feel a lot, can go over your head. I mean, even I print out my IEPs. I highlight, you know, there's a whole process and there's still things that I I spent a lot of my initial meetings. Um, can, can feel a lot, can go over your head. I mean, even that I print out my IEPs, I highlight, you know, there's a whole process and there's still things that I, I spent a lot of my initial meeting trying to just understand certain terminology. Um, my question is around culturally responsive IEPs in the district and how we support English language learners. Do you have like any good examples of how you work with English language learners at your sites and how you kind of prepare them for the process? And, or maybe examples where you've collaborated with Ophi before, maybe just recommendations for us, right? Like for the board considerations um, of how we can do this better or how other districts support English language learners throughout this process that can feel sometimes very intimidating.
I know we have had uh, interpreters uh, from the interpretation, in, the interpreter line or uh, employees in the district who have come and interpreted IEPs for us. Uh, we are in the process uh, of, of um, working with a family who we don't have an interpreter for. And we're trying to figure out how we can get the documents accurately translated. Uh, so the family has a chance to participate and it, by knowing exactly what's in the IEP. So that is hard. It is a barrier for us. Uh, we're trying to work on that to find out um, how best to serve our families where English is not their first language, yet the language of education is. Um, so yeah, we're working on that. It's an ongoing, it's an ongoing battle for us, not a battle, it's an ongoing uh, quest for us.
And Mr. Manciger, maybe you can answer like, what could we do at the district level to improve this?
Yeah, so we, we do have a language line, of course, and that, and, and you can access that and it's very many languages. Um, we also have a contract with a company called Album and they are able to in um, you know, turn around and, and reinterpret our um, IEPs for us. Um, so Candy, reach out to me if there's a specific language you needed in, we can make sure that we're um, that we get that done. Another example I'll give is that we had a um, a child who speaks only Hebrew. And we were like, okay, well, how do we find um, somebody who can interpret for the school psychologist so they can do the report? Well, it turns out one of our other school psychologists speaks Hebrew. So we brought that psych, those two psychologists together to the central office and we supported the family that way. Um, so you know, we get creative sometimes in the way we do things. Um, but um, you know, just for my time as a principal, I know that sites often it's that relationship building. And there's many ways to communicate beyond language with family. So I think we have to pay attention to that language barrier, of course. But then we also have to pay attention to that cultural, that cultural barrier that sometimes can get in the way and making people feel uncomfortable. And always being aware of that in IEP meetings. I mean, it is, it's anxiety proof. I get anxiety, anxiety being in IP meetings. It's a lot of paperwork. It's a lot of language. So we want to ensure that our families feel comfortable. Um, so we're always, we will always remove those barriers where we can. And so, and they can always reach out to us from sites to, to brainstorm those barriers.
Thank you. Uh, and Director Simon.
Thank you. Um, thank you for the presentation so far. I know that there's more to come. Um, so if anything that I'm asking is coming up later, just feel free to say so. Um, thank you for the, the presentation from Craigmont. It's really exciting to hear the work that you guys are doing and clearly you've got a lot on your plate. Uh, the two questions I have, um, Director Messenger and, you know, and, and our Craigmont representatives in the sense of how you want to answer it. As you, you mentioned a couple of things at the beginning. One is that um, you know, full inclusion, um, especially I think when we look at the data really has to start in tier one. Um, it really, you know, before I think Nichelle, you said before a student gets referred to special ed, we really have to be looking at, you know, what's the tier one, what's the, what's the work that we're doing in the general ed classroom and how are we adapting to it? And so I'm curious to know how, how your approach is to that? How does that work on the ground? And um, how are, you know, also parents involved kind of in the partnership with the tier one level of education? So I think that's one question. And then the other question has to do with, uh, I think Nichelle also you talked about, yeah, I think, and maybe this will come in areas of growth, Director M- Messenger, I'm not sure, but um, you talked about staffing, like what we need. I can't re, the slide was action packed, so I can't remember all the details in it. But you talked about, you know, needing staffing, needing IEP, MIAs. Um, so I'm, I'm kind of curious to know again, like what the intersect is between tier one education and what we need to make it successful for, for our full inclusion program.
Um, I think we'll answer most of those questions in the upcoming slides. Um, partially because those are deep questions that um, we could debate for days. Um, but I'll say that the number one thing I, I, I personally believe in BU SD, we need to do is focus on universal design for learning. We need to provide opportunities for students to share in different ways in classrooms, um, and different ways for them to show their learning. Um, it is um, a number one way that um, schools can serve all children. It's not a special education program. Um, and we need that time to be able to have all of our um, folks sitting down and, and, and learning that model better. And it is happening, um, but it needs to be a, a focused effort at all times.
Um, thank you so much. Should we continue with the next three sections of the presentation?
Yes. Sure. All right, can you see? The presentation again? Okay. All right, so we're now going to do a data quick, quick glimpse. Um, I invite um, Principal Cannon, Ms. Pete, you can stay if you want, um, but you can also go to sleep if you want to. All right, so um, we have a few areas that we, uh, are areas of growth that are, um, the federal and state have, have let us know about. Um, one is that we are in significant disproportionality um, for African American black students in um, uh, different areas, categories of special education. Um, 2020, um, which will, this plan will end um, next year in uh, September. Uh, we were disproportionate, um, about a three to three times more than um, our white students. Other health impaired, specific learning disability, intellectual, intellectual disability and overall. We are currently working on this plan and in a, in March, we plan on presenting um, some updates on this plan as well as our C S A cycle two, because it repeats every year. Um, they're 27 month cycles and you could conceptually have two plans running at once. We are now, uh, we're still disproportionate, other health impaired, specific learning disability and intellectual disability. That plan is in progress. Uh, we are late turning in the plan, um, and it's really due to COVID concerns. It's been very challenging. Uh, there are over 130 other districts in the states who are also over identified for certain racial cultural groups. Um, we also have our special education plan that normally is every year, but is rolled over two years. Um, due to COVID and it, uh, we were out in graduation rate, ELA math participation, um, and then least restrictive environment. So for example, too many kids in, um, uh, in a non-public schools. Um, and then, and then there's overlay between the special education and the C S A's plan with disproportionality as well. We are waiting the 2022, 23 improvement areas from the CDA, CDE. We're assuming that it's going to come, you know, any mo, any day. All right. Um, this is just a quick um, a slide that um, highlights our sto, our total student enrollment at percentages in special ed. So the one thing I want us to notice is that we are really, this is the state below and this is BU SD up above here. And we're really pretty much in line with um, the state with the percentages in special education. 2016 was about 11%, we were a little higher than the state. 2017, 18, a little higher too. Uh, we actually dipped down in 2018, 19, and if we look over here at 2020, 21, we're actually below the state um, in the number of students in special education. Uh, this slide really just highlights um, overall percentage of students with disabilities. And you can see very clearly that um, of our um, student population with IEPs, 30, roughly 30% of them are black African American students, which is exactly why we're disproportionate. Um, behind that, we have our Latin X students. We are not disproportionate for Latin X. However, um, we are, um, we are main, paying attention to that. And one thing that we've done is in our C S A's plan, about 80 of our students that we've chosen for our visiting scholars are Latinx students. And that's a way for us to be proactive and preventative to ensure that we're not going in disproportionality for our Latinx students. The, our state sets at a, 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 a rate of three times or more. So for example, we right now have three times of, if you get three times as more of any racial category, that's um, in special education, then you, and you, it's three years in a row. Then you go into significant disproportionality. With our Latinx students, we're at about two right now. Um, for one category of SLD and then for ID and OHI, we're below, way below. So um, it really is about the percentages of students. Um, it's bad. It's a, it's a big issue and a big topic and one that um, we need to continue working on and the C S A's plan is one way. And that'll be presented at a future um, date. Um, this is just another slide that shows our current disability numbers and you can see very clearly um, for our, you know, these are different categories of um, disability that students can be um, can have in their IEPs. And then here you see these big spikes, right? The Latinx is 158, but it's not disproportionate. But it again, they're, they're second um, in line. Um, and so that's, um, that's a big concern for us as a district and something that we need to be addressing. And we'll talk a little bit about how we're mitigating that. Uh, this is um, one thing that um, we're pretty excited about is we've basically caught up of most of our initials. And that was due to the hard work over the summer of our psychologists and case managers and related service folks. Um, and for the money that we fortunately got to pay for folks. Um, but you can see kind of a trend over time of um, our assessments. Remember that 2021 is this year to date now, so you know, we're moving again into uh, initial IP season after the next report card period. Um, but you can see just across the board, these um, big spikes. Um, one thing that was interesting was Berkeley High School, we had 86 initials in 2018, 19. Luckily we've, you know, we shouldn't see that at a high school level. So luckily we've seen a drop in that. Um, and that is due um, hopefully to, you know, making sure students are, are getting, um, doing well in their, in their progress, their academic progress. So again, caught up, um, we do uh, have, we are, we do have tries that we're still catching up on. And of course there are students that were actually retesting too, because we, um, we were doing a lot of our testing virtually and we know there was, um, we feel like they're legally defensible, but there certainly, we weren't get, able to get a full picture of the student. So now that um, we're back in person, we've been um, reassessing, retesting students as needed. Um, and these take a lot of time and I'm proud of our teams for the work they've done and catching up after such a rough time of COVID. Right? So with that, um, this is a, this is a, um, uh, there's a lot of stories gone on this slide. Um, for one over here, you'll see mental health. You've seen over time, we have, um, the costs have dipped over time. Um, but we're still spending quite a bit of money on our mental health. We have this year, um, and we'll talk more later about this, um, Shayna will. But we do have um, three FTE school sites that are serving in-house counseling for our students. Um, and we'll talk a little bit later about how we think that that's um, not only saving us money, but also providing more wraparound service for our students, more personalized services. Uh, the mental health RTCs, we've also seen uh, an increase here. We're so far, we've had a decrease. Um, but these really are students that have had um, mental health crisis and are in residential treatment centers. And you can see there was definitely an increase over time and we likely, that has to do with, that with COVID and those times for students. A big one here is our NPA costs. Um, they have risen increasingly and there are a few, uh, I think areas and reasons why. Um, one, hardest staff positions that we have to reach out to NPAs and we can't control the prices as much for that. Um, we also have um, been working closely with HR and the Personnel Commission to try to recruit more instructional aids. Uh, we've had a hard time um, getting them internally. We've been utilizing um, places like Speech and Language Pathology Group um, to um, get more AAs. Um, and um, they are expensive. Um, and, and another thing that we're working on is we're actually trying to work with our teams to um, you know, to figure out if we really need that I A for a child. Um, adding an I to a child's IEP is a um, more restrictive environment for a student, because they haven't dealt with them all day. Sometimes it's very much needed, um, but we're working with our teams and I'll explain in a little while longer of a process to help with guide that. Right? So just to, to try to get through this um, in an efficient manner. Um, these are responses to errors of growth concern. Um, one, a big area is compliance. Uh, we often lose legal cases because we are out of compliance. We've missed um, dates. Um, we have monthly educational specialist um, learning committees led by our T, TSAs, uh, where we're going over different aspects of um, of things that they need to learn and um, in order to better serve our students. We have a biannual special education legal symposium that we send our school psychologist and um, and our TSAs to, to learn about the law. Um, and we also have educate, we had educational benefit training for principals and, and they also have Salsa coaching supports. Uh, we updated our psychoeducational report template with an emphasis on family engagement and a culturally responsive lens. Uh, we also have something called a response to intervention RTA teacher collaboration. And so we're working to approve our standardizing our pre-referral systems, like our cost teams and our student success teams. To ensure we're looking at data and we're not um, sending and we're doing that response to intervention before referring students to special education. We're also uh, going to be training our Berkeley High School admin to attend as more effective lead agency representatives, which is essentially the admin at the table. Um, and then we have an IEP coach that has been working very closely with our teams and she's been fantastic. Addition, staffing, again, working very closely with Human Resources Personnel Commission, um, and with our um, classified partnership, B C C E, to recruit and retain instructional aids and pair professionals and reduce our reliance on non-public agencies. Uh, we're in the midst of that now and we'll be moving into negotiations soon. Uh, we train sites to utilize something called the SKIA, Special Circum, Circumstances Instructional Assistance Process. And what that is, is it gives, um, it's a way to collect data to, to determine um, how much support is needed from an instructional aid and where it's happening. And then also to have an independence plan to go with that. Because again, we don't want our students to become overly reliant on our IAs. We want them um, to learn some skills and strategies and then we want to slowly phase them out. And there are students that we know that will need them through most of their career due to the level of their disability. And lastly, we've increased our trainings for our instructional assistants, paraprofessionals. Uh, we've had um, some dyslexia training for them this year. We've had some positive behavior support and we did one just recently on January um, for autism. And we want to continue that and, and create those opportunities for our IAs to, because they are essential members of our teams. Family communication, uh, one big thing we've done this, this year is working with our community advisory council. Um, not only have we increased the rate of um, the number of members, um, we've also um, we're working with them right now to develop a family friend, friendly procedural safeguards. Um, it's a long list of like 60 people or 60 pages, excuse me, and uh, it's very daunting. So we're working on um, boiling it down to make it for family friendly. We also have our school site IP teams who are regularly reaching out to families to report on progress. They have quarterly progress reports and annual IP meetings. We also have alternative dispute resolution to offer. So when things get sticky, that educational benefit is not, um, people, there's a disagreement on that. We have alternative dispute resolution that we offer through our Salsa that we've utilized a few times this year. We're for uh, different families. And we also have something called a admire, adhere model training. Um, if you look over here, I don't want to go through it too much, but it, it was designed to help um, address the learning recovery um, monies that we have. And to determine like a process for families and IP teams to discuss it. But it's also just a great model to use in general when there's a, a conflict. We're acknowledging, we're listening, we're collecting data, we're holding the IP meeting to talk, we're reviewing evidence and then resolving and coming up with possibilities together. Um, and then we had a family advocacy workshop this year, series with Dr. Mary Bacon. And I'm very excited to be working with her, continue to work with her through our next C S A's plan. Um, but we had some pretty good turnout for them. We talked about how to be more effective members in SSTs. Um, what things to bring to the SST team, what questions to ask I, SST IEP teams. Um, and then through our family interviews, their C S A's and special education plan, uh, we interviewed um, many, many parents and were able to get um, their voices around areas of concern for over identification as well as in special education. Lastly, and then we'll be going to discussion after this, add a district placement or least restrictive setting. At a district placement or least restrictive setting, we're always looking to keep kids as close as they can to their general education counterparts. We're working hand in hand with general education, as I mentioned earlier, around the universal design for learning and making sure that's an all lesson design. That's that's incorporating all the student voices in many ways. That is really the most studies you look at, if they talk about saving money in special education, they point always to universal design for learning. We have monthly inclusive education advisory committees. That's something that Matt Meyer had mentioned earlier that we're starting to meet with our special education staff to start a conversation about their needs and then we're hoping to start bringing in our IAs into that conversation and the BCC partners. And then eventually we'll be bringing parents in there for that parent voice. Student services, sped services, principals, right now we're updating a culture responsive discipline matrix in order to ensure that we're using other means of correction and more culturally responsive, so we're not suspending children. We're exploring the expansion of a continuum of services by adding potentially a home base model for our severe class at elementary level. Right now, we don't have any special day classes at elementary. We had a CC classroom, but we ended up closing it because one student graduated out and another student moved into another to another setting. So we we ended up shutting that down, but we're hoping to bring back more a new model that will help serve students. We're also exploring a small scare. We also think we often hear from families, the reason why their student can't go to Berkeley High School is because it's too big. And they have high anxiety and mental health needs, so we really need to start thinking about what, you know, how do we create a small scale therapeutic model for our students with high anxiety? We do have lots of small models at Berkeley High School. We do feel it needs most of the students' needs, but we need to explore that deeper. We have monthly literacy action plan implementation team meetings, that's in 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 consequence or consequence, but in in lieu of the dyslexia lawsuit. And we're using, just so you know, now we are using Dibbles, which is dynamic indicator of of basic. I always have to read it because I can remember of early literacy skills. So all of our K through two sites are using this and in quarterly cycles. And it's giving them data to to ensure that we're not, they'll have those gaps and phonics and phonemic awareness. I'm in reading instruction for students. We're also visiting our NPAs annually, more to review progress to ensure least restrictive environment. My supervisor and myself go, we visit, we ask lots of questions. And always the plan is how do we bring the student back? And we're working with our others, I'm working with our other Selpa directors to ensure a continuum of services across Selpa that serve many students' needs. I apologize for the quickness of that. But now it's time to ask questions and to dig in a little bit deeper.
Director Messenger, I am so sorry to do this, but I want us to be cognizant of the time. And so if it is okay with you, I'm going to ask the board directors to please hold their questions until the end of the entire presentation. And we'll go ahead and circle back at the end. I'm sorry for this interruption to your presentation.
Oh, not a problem. My wife tells me all the time that I am not very brief.
No, you are doing an incredible job. We we need to receive all of the information that you are giving us. And it's so good though, I don't want to pause, I want to hear more.
You know, there are many arms of special education, that's the challenge of. So with this slide. Apologies, I want to just talk a little bit about our continuum of services and BOSD. And we're going to dig in a little bit to each of the levels, pre-K, middle, pre-K, early literacy, elementary school, middle and high. And my team's going to talk a little bit about their programs in there. But I really, you know, I really want to point out that, you know, the idea again of a continuum of services is that we're always, we're providing enough options and opportunities for based off our student need. And we're always trying to get to this top road or excuse me, we're always trying to keep kids down in general education with no direct special education services. And then here, you know, we want our students being served with their general education peers. There are times when students are in home hospital due to illness or where they have to go to residential treatment centers to get that extra support they need with their mental health needs. But we're always looking of ways to bring our students back. And one thing to all, I think, one thing that people don't realize is that our special education staff actually serve general education students. We are very involved in the response to intervention model. And in the slide deck, if you click on that link, it'll give you the actual a description of how our our mild mod, our mod severe teachers, how they're all working together with our general education coaches and teachers to ensure that we're serving many children. And those are those, that's where you have flexible grouping, you have co-teaching models. Special education really benefits every student. We know when we serve our students who have most needs, we're serving really everyone better. So long fellow, Lena will talk a little bit about the therapeutic home base that we're doing, as formerly knows of the CC. Some of the changes we're making and then Berkeley High School will talk around about their different models. With that, I'd like to introduce Principal. Where.
Here I am. Good evening, everybody. I will be so brief. Thanks so much. So inclusion, special education starts at the preschool level and we are so blessed to have inclusion, special education in our district and our early childhood education program. We have inclusion at the preschool level. However, we have a model called the Integrated Model. And this is a program that consists of fifteen students in the classroom with a credentialed special ed teacher. These fifteen students, half of them, eight students have an IEP, seven are neurotypical students. And the ratio is five to one. And these integrated classrooms, you can find two at Hopkins, two at King CDC and one at Franklin. Franklin being our largest site, we have an inclusion model as well. Pre-pandemic, our general ed classrooms are inclusion classrooms have twenty four students. However, right now during the pandemic, we have sixteen students. Again, pre-pandemic, our inclusion model had twenty four students with, and three of them had an I, three students had an IEP. And twenty one students had a neurotypical. There were neurotypical peers in our classrooms and this was a ratio of twenty four to to two. We had the inclusion teacher as well as an aide in this class, a special ed aide. In addition to a general ed teacher and to general ed instructional assistance as well. So our inclusion model starts at Franklin. And it's a wonderful model that moves into our district at the rest of the elementary sites. We also provide services at Hopkins for students who only receive speech or physical therapy. And so we have students that live in Berkeley that might not come to our preschools, but they receive services already at this level and age and stage. Some great things that are happening already at this young age, anywhere from two point nine to five years old. As we provide motor groups, these motor groups are not only for children who have an IEP. But again, we're talking about inclusion for children who we discover in our response to intervention team that they might benefit from being part of a motor group and the communication with the parents as well. We do push in for speech and language services in the classrooms. We also have modified social skills groups in response to COVID with response to COVID protocols as well. We have social groups and skills groups that we have developed more so now. And during our conversations that we're having during our RTI meetings that we have at least once a month. And we discuss every single child. We have two hundred and fifty students right now that we're serving between all three preschools. And there is a lot of children that we're serving in one of these areas. We also make sure that when our children leave the preschool and they're going to elementary, that we are making sure that the transition is smooth and that they're receiving everything that they need in their IEP as they transition out or that they also get some some services taken away because they have developed already so much at the preschool level. You see some amazing growth right at at this age and stage. Some current projects, I'm really proud of some of the things that are going on right now is we brought a huge grant that we got from CDE and through Alameda County. And we are providing professional development to all of our teachers and instructional assistants. Specifically in every single classroom in our district, at least two staff per classroom. One teacher and one instructional assistant have received picture exchange system. It's called the PEX program. This is so important right now at this age because we're receiving children who might not have any language. And at this age, you know, we don't know the children, we don't have history from prior teachers. So we're like, do they talk? Do they not talk? Right? Do they have language? So we're always asking these questions. And with this, these system, these strategies that is given to us, we're able to get a little bit more faster and we're able to assess our children and might not have to go and get an IEP because of these systems and strategies have been helping our children. So we just went through the two-day intense training. And again, I can say very proudly that all of our staff got this training and it was very intense and they're ready to use it in the classroom. Again, a lot of our inclusion and integrated classroom teachers, they use these strategies. But now our general ed teachers throughout all of our three preschools have this training. We also received funds for adaptive equipment. We now have an adaptive equipment library at the preschool program. What is that? That is a library that we created in the middle of a multipurpose room where if a teacher needs a standard, they need some dolls that look like some of our children or some stress balls or something where, you know, a seat where our children, maybe they don't know how to sit sit still and they need to get a special chair. So we have everything, a variety of all areas. And our teachers have been trained by our inclusion teacher on how to use these items. And because it was, it's a lot, we purchased a hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars worth of material. If our general ed teachers do not know how to use it, they ask their colleagues, our special ed teachers, our inclusion teachers on how to use this. We also were able to get a grant for by year for Head Start to also receive many for the adaptive equipment. We were able to share this huge list that one of our teachers created and put her her head together with other colleagues to create an intense library and we shared it with Oakland Unified School District and other agencies as well. We also have now, we're in the process of renovating our playgrounds too, so they can be more inclusive. Again, not only for children with an IEP, but for children, for all children, for our general ed population, so it could be more inclusive. We not only received three hundred fifty thousand from this grant, but we also had the district match it. So we have a lot of things happening right now and it's a three-year project. And we base all of our beliefs and our curriculum through creative curriculum and second step that supports our social, emotional children, children at this young age and stage. And again, we will continue to focus on collaborating with our partners, which is Head Start by other agencies around in Berkeley as well as with Alameda County. And we continue to try to figure out how to how to continue to get staff at the preschool level. Because we are short right now during this time and even before the pandemic. So we're just really collaborating with the city of Berkeley with other colleagues in Alameda County that can help us out and continue with professional development at this age. So thank you very much. I invite you all when you all feel safe to come and visit our preschools because there's a lot to share and thanks again.
Thank you, Principal Carrillo. All right, my team, let's try to be succinct and brief since we packed this agenda.
All right, it's my turn, Sean.
Okay, so good evening, I'm Floran Palma, the sped program supervisor supporting most of our elementary site. Sites, as the wonderful Craigmont team mentioned a while ago, all elementary students with IEPs are members of the regular general general education classroom. Where students with varied learning and support needs learn together. I want to share some highlights that are happening at the elementary level. There's great collaboration between sped staff, general education teachers and site and district administrators. Site teams have also been very responsive in addressing parent concerns and discussing these concerns either in IP meetings or team meetings. And for the past few years, BUSD has been able to provide structured literacy training, such as the Wilson Reading Program to all elementary sped teachers, as well as most of our literacy coaches and some RPI staff. Aside from the literacy training, other support provided to our sped teachers include working with our great teachers and special assignments. This has been touched, mentioned by Sean a while ago, but I'm going to repeat again. They work with our case managers by holding monthly professional learning community meetings. They also provide monthly Wilson coaching, as well as open office hours for them to work with case managers and some of the students in their caseloads. This year, we have been very lucky to be able to hire an IP coach who supports our teachers in the IP process and ensures that we have legally defensible IEPs and compliant documentation. We also provide training to our instructional assistants. They meet with the case managers or other sped service providers, either weekly or bimonthly for them to get training and be provided with tools to be successful in supporting our students in the classrooms. Our wonderful district behaviorists have provided nonviolent crisis intervention training to site teams for them to safely and effectively manage difficult situations and disruptive behaviors. For curriculum, our staff uses the following evidence-based curriculums to support our students. Aside from the Wilson Reading Program, we also use lecture learning, unique learning systems and accessible literacy learning program are all. Both the Wilson and Lexia are being used by our mild moderate support needs teachers. And the unique and all programs are utilized by our extensive support needs teachers. For social emotional learning, we work with our general education partners in implementing the social thinking curriculum as well as the zones of regulation. And lastly, most of our primary grades use the Handwriting Without Tears program that helps students with students build essential skills for emergent writing and handwriting success. Thanks.
Thank you, Floran.
Thanks, Floran. Good evening, Board and BUSD community. My name is Lena Sweeney and I work primarily with our three middle schools. While we are dedicated to maintaining our inclusive practices such as push-in and co-teaching models for our middle school students with disabilities, we are increasing our capacity to serve our students with individualized education plans through intervention programs such as Wilson, Lexia and Unique. At the middle school level, our case managers engage in professional development in these programs. And we are offering structured literacy classes at each of the middle schools to meet the needs of students for whom targeted interventions are necessary in order to access their education. There is increased mental health and social emotional consultation between our wonderful school psychologists and our site teams. We are now offering through our school psychologists, direct educationally related mental health services to twenty five of our sixth through eighth grade students. In regards to our goals for the middle schools, we are hopeful that we can expand the number of students served by our school psychologists as ERM's counselors and look to increasing individual and group counseling opportunities for a great number of students in the year to come. We have restructured our counseling enriched classroom at the middle school level into a therapeutic home base through a collaborative effort with our Seneca partners and our site base and district teams. Our students in the program have access to counseling services, small supportive classes, as well as supported general education opportunities. We have been able to double the number of students who are we are serving in this more supportive program. Teams have responded to an increase in requests for assessments. Case managers attend SSTs, cost team meetings and support all students when pushing into general education classes. Middle school special education uses the looping case management model. Strengths in this are that we strive to have students retain the same case manager for all three years, thereby increasing family engagement and communication. Finally, our middle school and district TSAs have been absolutely. Finally, our middle school and district TSA's have been absolutely instrumental in supporting our new teachers. And our more experienced teachers as well with initial assessments for special education, providing consult. Conducting triennial review assessments, leading IEPs when necessary. Providing professional development and ongoing coaching support to our site-based team. Thank you so much for inviting us and I'll pass it to my high school partner.
Right, we're gonna make a executive director special education decision and we're gonna make this our last slide and the rest after that will be. We'll ask the board to read um and then we'll revisit it a later date.
Good evening. Uh my name is Kristen Hardy and I am the program supervisor at Berkeley High School. Thank you for having us. Um the high school provides a rich and diverse um extension of the services. Provided at the um elementary and middle schools. Focusing on an inclusive model that includes flexible enrollment and a service delivery model to. Provide maximum access to general education courses for all students with IEPs. Essential element of the I uh the high school structure for special education is the collaborative learning center. That course um is where students are provided supported access to their, to the adopted curriculum in the, in all content areas. With supplemental curriculum to address um specific areas related to their disabilities, including study skills, executive functioning. All high school students with IEPs are required to have specific transition planning to help them. Plan forward for their life beyond high school. Um and so there is targeted curriculum. Um and instructional opportunities to address those to that, those transition areas. In addition, the CLC is an opportunity for students to work on individual IEP goals that target. The skill areas required to hopefully work us out of a job. Um this course provides elective credits toward the high school diploma. And the high school also has the, an extension of the middle school counseling enriched program. This program affords a smaller setting with therapeutic supports for students whose social emotional needs are impacting their access to their education. And it also affords a, a safe space for them to come throughout the day. Um if they need additional support when they're in any setting on campus. Um connected to the transition program, the high school writes to two federal grant programs that support. Pre vocational preparation for our students, the TPP program, the transition partnership program and workability. These programs are available to all students with IEPs as part of their transition planning. And as I mentioned, afford opportunities for pre vocational work. Um our home-based program um serves students with um extensive support needs. Students in that program are working toward a certificate of completion. And that curriculum focuses on practical application of essential skills. For students in independent living, community access and vocational skills. So they're getting practical math and uh literacy skills. Um but many students in that program are, all students are participating in at least one period of general education and many are participating. In multiple uh multiple general education classes throughout their day. For our students who are in the home-based program um and earn a certificate of completion, they. We provide programming through the age of twenty-two through our transition program. That uh transition program is a partnership with um Alacosta, which um is one of our community-based partners. And this program focuses on community access, independent living skills, pre vocational skills and personal agency. And self-advocacy. Focus areas for the high school are to align our continuum of RTI supports and structures to the. To those across the district. We are excited that this year we are really putting a focus on. Developing stu-, or holding student study team meetings proactively for students. Who may be experiencing early struggle and coordinating with the new um five oh four coordinator. Uh and we are also. Like the middle school, expanding our continuum of social, emotional and mental health supports for students. We currently serve. Eighty students with IEPs through education-related mental health services. And are um working on expanding and connecting the continuum of supports. From drop-in services for general ed students through ERM's uh for our students with IEPs. Through group counseling opportunities for general education students.
Alright, um I know we're way over time and I apologize, um board. Uh there's a lot of rich material here and I really want to thank my team. They're amazing. I don't even think we have time for questions, but I'm willing to take them if we have that time. Um but I'm happy to come back in another session in time um to present the rest of, of this.
Thank you so much. I do um would want to take just maybe one ten. A sentence question from our board members because it, we don't have the opportunity to have you all with us often. And I think it's important to take the opportunity to engage with you while I'll be happy here. So I'm gonna ask Director Sinai to quickly ask your question and then we'll shoot over to Director Vassidin.
Great, and um I'm fine with if you want to answer it offline. You know, in the Friday notes with the superintendents, but I have two questions. Um one is whether data can be added for English language learners. Um not just Latinx, so that would be great. Um and then um in relation to the data slides. Um in relation to evidence of success, um do we have targets that we're trying to achieve? Around reduction of um students who are getting either referred or advanced through special ed um in a disaggregated. Way, so um so not that, not that we're just monitoring the data, but that we actually have some goals that we're trying to reach. And then the other um question, actually, I guess there are two other quick questions is one. Do we have a district advisory, uh family advisory group for special ed? I know you talked about the CAC. Which is a regional for the Sopa, but do we have one for Berkeley? And then the last question is, um and I don't know if this is really a special ed question or a question to the superintendent that we can talk about, but. The whole kind of professional development of our teaching staff around cultural humility. And cultural competency in order to prevent the over identification. Of kids of color, particularly African American and Latinx in the special ed in the first place. Cause I, you know, we've talked a lot in the past around the disproportionate numbers. Also potentially be a reflection of some uh cultural competency and cultural humility. So those are my questions. I can take them offline.
Yeah, and I believe we'll answer, especially around the disproportionality, we'll answer that in our presentation in March with the head services team.
And please feel free to email me as well because I can talk about the mental health role. And how school psychologists participate in tier one, tier two, tier three interventions, as well as where I want to take the role. And I also think it's really important to talk about parent support. Um I've met with, to be my school psychologist this morning, we meet. Uh for coffee because we want to make our roles better. We want to serve the district more. And we want to serve the kids at all levels and I, we were, we don't want to just do assessment anymore. It's not fun and we, we. Get joy out of helping our students. So um one of those things we want to do is we do want to set up um parent um trainings. And uh so many times we hear our parents, they can't get our kid to school, we can't get homework done and we're the people to come to for that. So we'll talk more about that in March. But um feel free to email me in the meantime.
Thank you, Director Vassidin.
Hi, and my questions can also be answered in, in Friday notes, um but I just wanted to ask them really quickly publicly too. Um I know, and thank you everyone for your presentations. There's, I actually have like five questions we're only going to talk about too.
Or, or one, or one, if we could all follow the directions, ask one question, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Um one is the issue of disproportionality, which Director Sinai already touched upon, but if you look at the slide where you look at. The percentage of students with disabilities by demographic, you see that in both our black population and in our Latinx population, the percentage increases the most by three percent. And so I loved Mr. Mansinger that you talked about how you want to proactively engage with Latinx families to address. Potential issues with disproportionality and how in C states there are also a lot of next families impacted. And I know that Latinos and Niños has brought this up in meetings with our associate superintendent and the superintendent. So I'm going to ask if we're going to be proactive about this, have we had a class in Spanish to address this? And I think, and I know um associate superintendent Aurelio, maybe you can connect with me later because I know we've talked about this, but. Potentially offering one of Mary Bacon's classes in Spanish. I think that would be great, especially if we're going to be proactive about. Potentially addressing that disproportionality in the Latinx population. And the second one that I'd love to just learn more about, I don't want to like skim over the high school presentation because it's so important. Is just how home base might work with our CTE program, right? That's a very unique population. It's an older segment of students with IEPs and so. I'd love to just learn um how we're preparing them for vocational jobs, just a little bit more and how we're partnering with our CTE program for that. So. If we could um connect on Friday notes about that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. My team put a lot into this. You could see we're doing a lot in special education services and we have a lot of work to do. Um I want to thank you all for your time this evening and um I look forward to hearing the rest of the board meeting.
Thank you, thank you so much. Uh and thank you for your presentation. Um Vice President Rabbit, I saw you lowered your hand, so.
Well, he kinda ended.
Oh, I, I apologize.
Cut off, it's fine.
Sorry, President Brown, you're the boss.
Did just one quick follow-ups, which can be um sent to us in writing um to the definitions around. How these thing, what this means when you say intellectual disability versus specific learning disability. Versus other health impairment. And then how do you measure those with outcomes, especially when um. Specific learning disability can be a variety of things. Um so if we could have that information and then if any feedback from um Mary Bacon's workshops that you gathered. From uh the parents would be helpful. And then just wanted to know how do we ensure. That especially at our middle and high school, that our classes are well balanced to um continue to support a healthy, full inclusion model. So I'm happy to talk about that offline and um would also um welcome any one-on-one time. Thank you so much.
Looks like we have some homework to do.
A little bit, a little bit of homework, but we know that you've come prepared judging by your presentation this evening. So thank you again. Um Executive Director for your presentation and for the staff members that you brought with you uh for tonight's conversations. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We are going to transition now. Um if you were here with us last week, you know that we uh received. A presentation that focused on the governor's budget on, on, on unrestricted, on the unrestricted general fund. Um and so tonight we'll receive a presentation um that focuses on the high level priorities for uh. For us as the board to consider. And so I'm excited to welcome Superintendent Stevens as well as Associate Assistant Superintendent Fallinsby. For at this evening's presentation.
Thank you very much, President Brown. I'm actually just gonna pass this directly over to Assistant Superintendent Pauline Fallinsby, who will walk us through this presentation.
Okay, so good evening, everyone. Um I'm gonna share my screen. We have a presentation just in terms of our budget priorities. Where we are in the process and the feedback that we're soliciting tonight. So let me share my screen. I'm going to slide show. So um so the agenda, we're gonna be looking um at where we are in the budget process. Um sharing with your overall approach to budgeting for twenty-two, twenty-three. Um with the understanding that we're very early in the process. This is February. Um we're also taking a quick look at the general fund or projected revenue expenses and reduction targets. Very high level um at this point. And also looking at our one-time funding, which is the um, which is the follow-up. From the governor's um pres-, the presentation added on the governor's budget. Just in terms of looking at this funding to see if there's capacity um for our current program needs. And of course, um what we are asking from the board tonight, um we're gonna be sharing um our approach. And we want your feedback in terms of are we on the right track um with our overall approach. We're also gonna talk about um all the high level priorities that we've come up with. Um but um with the understanding that we still have to collect feedback from our principals, our communities. And our various committees that we work with. So where are we in the annual budget process? I'm gonna share this link to our building um milestones, which kind of shows you. The steps that actually um the various commitment committees will be working with. And just where we are in the process um with our overall partners and. Um I don't know why this won't share properly. None of you can all see this. Open preview should work it. Alright, so this is coming up really small, but I think the point that I'm trying to make here. This might, if you look at the link in the milestones, it goes through all the steps that we're taking um on a, on a um. By date, by month. And um we are early in the process. Um but this shows you all the meetings that will be um coming up with, with um Sback, the D-LAC PAC. Our groups that we're working with as well as how they interrelate with our um, our board meetings. So um I can't get that link to work for whatever reason, but um but that does, that's the essence of what I'm trying to share. Um with our building milestones. And the, these milestones came out of our budget leadership team. Working with everybody on the team in terms of coming up with um our milestones, which also ties in with our budget calendar. Um so sharing where we are in the overall um budgeting process. Um as um President Brown mentioned, um last time we met, I brought the information from the governor's um January budget. Um we did share that we have a five point three three percent polo, but there are rumors of further increases in revenue. So. Obviously, as we get more information, we'll be updating our um, our projections. The ADA formula that I shared with you that still has to be solidified by the legislature, so it's not firm up at this point. So this is an area that we have to watch. Um and of course, uh lots of other unknowns um at this stage in the process. Um we're still working with our bargaining, with our, our um, our union groups. To come up with our bargaining, um collective bargaining. We don't know the impact of that at this time. And of course, COVID remains an unknown in terms of um additional expenses that we may need for next year. As well as the additional review that we may be getting from other sources. So we also shared with you um budget reductions of about four point six million dollars. That we had um shared with Alameda County Office of Ed. Um we have looked at those a little bit in a little bit more detail. They are more solidified at this point and we're working. With Sback to um to fine tune these amounts, but these are still in development. And as I mentioned, we still need to collect feedback from our community, um our staff, principals. And our various committees. And we, we hope to be doing that shortly, but their impact is not um actually finalized here. And that's in terms of our budget priorities. Um and what is the end result of all of this budgeting? We hope to bring budget um final budget reduction strategies to the board. And the timeline for that is at the June first meeting. So between now and June first. Um we'll be working with our communities. We'll be coming up with budget cut targets, the budget cuts. Um suggestions and obviously um we would need board approval to enact any of those proposals. Um so how are we um actually approaching our budget reductions? Uh we shared with you earlier, our budget reduction, our budget principles in terms of looking. How we are approaching our budget reductions and of course, we're protecting um our services to students. Um we are using our LCAP um guy, um goals as a principles and our guiding. As we look at our budget priorities, we're looking at our LCAP goals. We are using data to drive our decisions. And we're um anticipating that cuts will be made. We are using data to drive our decisions and we're anticipating that cuts will be made across the board. So it wouldn't be targeted to one group. So that's the link to our budgeting principles and these are the principles that we're using as we build the 2223 budget for the 2223 school year. And again, reiterating, we still have to get feedback from various groups. And we are actively working with our SBACK to come up with our budget reduction lists. And of course, the Board of Education sets the overall direction for the budget decisions and you do have the final decision over the budgets for the district. So again, more of our approach, we do want to have a balanced budget. And in a balanced budget, we mean our, we're not, we don't have a deficit. So we'll be spending more or expending less than the revenues that we're bringing in. So we're not, at all times, we'll have a positive surplus and not operating at a deficit. Right now, we are operating at a deficit and even our plans with the additional revenue, we still will be at a deficit. And of course, we have to be looking at our costs for collective bargaining. And we have to maximize the use of one-time and funding as well as alternative funding sources. And we are going to stay away from eliminating positions. That's not our goal as much as possible. So important notes about our 2223 general fund budget. I don't have our multi-year, but what I shared with you the last time, I'm just reiterating. 2122, we had, we have a $1.6 million structural deficit, which means that we're spending $1.6 million more than the revenue that we're bringing in. And in 2223, even after implementing the revenue that we're anticipating from the governor's budget, we are still deficit spending 1.3 million. So we don't have a balanced budget in that respect, but we do have a positive ending fund balance. The projected revenue of the $6.4 million, you would think that would alleviate our structural deficit. But of course, remember, it's being used to absorb increasing costs, existing increasing costs, which would be on employer pension costs, our stirs and pears, our step in column. We're also impacted by the fact there's a decline in enrollment. And of course, our special education, the program that we just heard from today. We have to be mindful of the cost of that program and increases in that program. So the bottom line, we haven't moved away from the fact reductions are necessary. We had set aside a million dollars from the, from the multi-year projection that we looked at. We have a lot more than a million dollars in costs that we're trying to, to fund. So we do need budget reductions to, to address our structural deficit as well as our increased expenses. So when we're, we're still working with our, with our groups and we're still looking at various revenue sources and one-time expenses and ongoing expenses. But right now, our reduction target is $4.1 million. And that's, that's what we would need to raise in terms of trying to meet what we have now identify as, as increased costs and new costs, increased costs and, and ongoing costs. So we're not prepared to go into detail with that amount. At this time, we're just going to be calling out some of the expenses that we're looking at. And I'm trying to get your feedback in terms of have we covered everything at this point? Again, here we are of the $4.1 million. We do need, we do have $3.8 million identified as that balance, as budget balancing solutions. And that means we're looking at $1.9 million in general fund reductions. We have $1 million from new revenue, which is what we talked about from the multi-year and $900,000 for special education. So we're still trying to identify $300,000 in budget balancing solutions. And we are, will be working with, with our groups to come up with this amount. So we do need to cut $4.1 million and we do have $3.8 million of this amount identified. So we're still trying to find an additional $300,000. And this is a somewhat of a moving target as we meet with different groups and we prioritize our expenses and we look at different revenue sources as well. Did you have anything to add Superintendent Stevens at this point?
No, you're, you're doing very well. Why don't we keep going through some of the, the content to come?
May I ask Assistant Superintendent Fallinsby, would you mind just putting the presentation in slideshow mode so that we can?
Oh, is it not in slideshow mode? I thought it was. Sorry.
That's okay.
I thought I'd done that. Sorry, guys.
It's okay.
Oh, it's much better. I thought I'd done that, actually. So now, just in terms of looking at our, our 2223 budget. We know the general fund is going to be bearing their share of the labor costs as well as their share of the stirs and pears increases. Our workers' comp, we know that we're going to have to adjust that rate as our claims are outpacing our revenues at this point. And of course, we're also looking at our equal literacy programs. We'll be using one-time and ongoing. This says cost, but I guess they're on one-time, on ongoing cost for this particular program. That some of it will be coming from the general fund and we're going to be trying to identify other funding sources for this program. And now when it comes to our one-time, we have one-time revenue and we have one-time expenses. At this time, our thinking is that our affinity-based programs will be funded either through one-time funding that we currently have or that we're going to be trying to identify from the governor's budget. Our social and emotional supports that will have to come from alternative funding or one-time funding at this point. Environmental literacy, COVID and early literacy supports are, are being viewed at this time as being one-time. And of course, in terms of deferring to 2324, we, as we look at our expenses, we're trying to determine what's going to be funded by general fund. What's possible one-time or alternative funding? And then what we're going to differ on to 2324. And right now, we're looking at some staff recommendations that have come up that we're thinking we're going to defer to 2324. But again, this is a work in progress and we're pretty early in the budget process. When I, when I met with you the last time, we talked about additional funding from the governor's budget. And we've now determined that expanded learning opportunity Berkeley is going to receive $1 million in ongoing cost. This is, they have very specific needs and we're trying to see their existing needs that can be met by some of this funding. Our mental health partnership grant to the city of Berkeley, we're getting $650,000 per year for four years. Our ATG readiness grant, we do have $341,000 for this year. And I've just discovered tonight that CDE said that our allocation was actually wrong, Brent. So this amount may change and it will update the board as needed. Our educator effectiveness, we've talked about this one before, $250,000 per year for four years. COVID, we don't know at this time if we're going to get any additional funding from the state. But we do know that we're getting $2.78 million in restricted funding. And we're going to maximize the use of this restricted funding to meet our needs in a strategic manner. So these are all the things that we're still unpacking. And as we're looking at our one-time revenue, we're looking at our one-time expenses. So these are some of the, the staffing that we had from last year's budgeting. We had determined that they were funded on one-time costs. Most of these, we think, can be picked up either by our LCAP, increasing LCAP funding or other funding sources. But we just wanted to remind the board that this is the current staffing that's currently on one-time funding that we're trying to solidify the funding to cover this. And now I'm going to take us to some high-level priorities that we had shared with the board. The cost that we had covered for 2122 and then what we're thinking, what's our thinking for 2223. Of course, in our pandemic supports, we did spend a significant amount in 2122 or we're scheduled to spend a significant amount with our testing and our contact tracing team. You can see that there's a drastic reduction in our, in our projections with 2223. This is, we're, we're estimating the cost with this drastic reduction to be about $650,000. But we're also identifying the funding source for this would not be from the general fund. It would be from Fund 20 or from new COVID funds if we actually receive them. Another area that we're thinking of our Black Lives Matter resolution and our African-American success initiatives. This is the current work that we're, that's currently funded to support the following work. And they're listed here, $720,000. Some of the, our projected commitments are also listed here and we, we still have to determine the costs for this. So, so this is an area that we know is a high-level priority. And we're working to determine the final cost and the funding for our Black Lives Matter resolution as well as our African-American success initiatives. And Brent or Ruben can speak more to this if there are questions in this area. And this is true for the Latinx resolution. We currently have $225,000 for this program, for this year, for these various programs. In 2223, here is our projected commitments and the cost is, we're looking at that being $182,000 and $67,000 of this would come from the general fund. And then in our social and emotional learning costs and mental health programs, we do have the additional funding from the city of Berkeley. And this is what we're currently doing in this area. And of course, and a lot of this $2.5 million is our storage and restart grants. And that was to address learning loss or to mitigate learning loss. And of course, for 2223, our focus will be on our mental health partnership with the city of Berkeley. And we're, we're targeting $650,000, but that's coming from a grant at this time. So, so again, we kind of laid out what, what we think are the priorities that we're addressing at this time, the high-level priorities. We do still have to work with our community and various labor partners and staff in terms of getting feedback. And we are going to be working with SBACK and our various groups with our budget reductions to solidify those. And of course, as we get information from the governor's budget, we'll be sharing that information with, we'll be updating our priorities and continuing to look at review district programs to identify budget efficiencies and savings and also review administrative support needed to support expanded programming. And our governors may revise as the next opportunity for us to get any updates on the, on the budget assumptions in terms of constructing our budget. And of course, enacted budget would be in June. And next steps, the final approval for the board will be June 1, 2022 for the budget reductions. And we'll be bringing, bringing the final budget for approval on June 29. So that's a brief overview of our current thinking. And again, we want to make sure, this is our roadmap and we want to make sure I get feedback from the board. Are we on the right track with our overall approach? And also to have we missed any P-board priorities at this stage with the understanding that we still have to collect feedback from all various groups. So with that, I can take questions or answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Fallinsby for your presentation. Board members, are there any questions for Assistant Superintendent Fallinsby at this time?
I can stop sharing my screen unless you think you, you want me to go back to look at.
Oh, that's okay. It seems like you're, you're getting off easy tonight. There aren't any questions for the, from the board directors. Just there is a question from Director. And then there's a question from Director Alfred.
And then more importantly, President Brown, we also want feedback in terms of are we on the right track or are we missing anything?
Absolutely. So let's take the questions and then the board will go around and just give a yes or a no to feedback if they're on the right track as well as recommendations if they are not. Director, what's it is?
Yeah, I, I love seeing our affinity-based projects being called out. And thank you so much for that presentation. I think that's definitely on the right track. One thing that's missing though, I wish that like when we're categorizing these affinity-based projects that we're also looking at them through the lens of like, what are we doing to close the opportunity gap, right? And so our sped investments too, I'd like to see kind of reflected in that kind of high-level articulation. The other thing that, and we can connect offline about this and I can talk to the superintendent about this at our one-on-one. But I'd love to better understand the A to G funding and how we're thinking and that could also help some of these affinity-based projects. And so maybe we can connect offline Superintendent Stevens, but I'd love to hear how that's, you know, the different buckets for A to G funding and how that could be used to also help us address the opportunity gap in our vulnerable student populations. Thanks.
Me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for that. And I also think it's generally on the right track and look forward to the feedback from the community and the committees and everything. I just wanted to make one comment about the position control position that, that you're talking about putting off for another year. And I don't know where that falls in the scheme of things, but I know that positions in HR always, you know, get pushed off because nobody understands what the purposes of them is. And they never really rise to the top of the Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee lists. But, and I don't, I don't have an opinion on whether that's, that particular position should or shouldn't be put off. But I guess I just want to encourage staff to, if, to make a case for, for positions like that. If they're, you know, if they're, if you think that they're really important, because if it's HR that, and, and we need positions in order to hire the people to implement, you know, all these great programs that we're trying to do. Then that probably is more important than some of the other investments that we're trying to make. So I don't know, I don't know if they are, but, but don't, I guess I would say, don't sell HR too short on, on what it really means. And I know that that might mean cutting, cutting somewhere else or not funding something else. And when the time comes, like if, if you able to make the case, then you know, I'll, I'll put something up to be cut. But I would love you to feel empowered to make the case if you think that you really need it.
I see you got the bam from, the bow from Sam and we will definitely be calling on you. I was going to say, we'll, we'll definitely behold you to your word about calling on you to promote something else to cut.
Yeah, that probably won't be as popular, but yeah.
Exactly. Right. Vice President David and the Director Sider.
Thank you so much. I wanted to also agree that you all are definitely on the right track. And I really appreciate this presentation and the thoughtfulness and the clarity. And thank you for spending time with me earlier to answer many of my. And thank you for spending time with me earlier to answer many of my detailed questions. Um, I just want to add around um implementation for the African-American success framework um should be a part of our um support because if we come up with a plan and then we don't have funding in place to help see it through to implement it, um, we will have missed that opportunity from the framework. That's just been my experience with our LCAP plan. And then um, I also echo what Director Alper is going to say around making sure that we have our back offices fully staffed, um especially with human resources and our business office. Um, I was looking at the list today. We have lots of teachers retiring. Love them from Rosa Parks. I'll be emailing you. And um um, you know, that's gonna mean more, you know, filling those positions. And we also may lose some staff because of our vaccine mandate, which will also mean more positions. So just want to make sure that, you know, when we're thinking about when people retire, that means you still have those people that we're managing because now they're moved into the benefits um portion of the back office. And then we have our new hires that we're adding and onboarding. So um, please, please, I, I think that is the area that will help us the most in reaching our other equity goals is just making sure that we get the back office staffing right and business office procedures expedited.
Director Saini.
Thanks. Um, I agree with that, uh, Vice President Babett. I think that's really important. And Director Al, Alper, um. I think you're on the right track. I, it, it makes sense. I guess the two questions that um constantly kind of go through my mind, so a little bit broken record is around our evidence of success, you know, and that we kind of enter into these budget discussions every year and neglect to say, what did we do and how did it work and do we want to continue it? Um, which then kind of relates to my next question, which is there's a lot of discussion around strategic planning and priorities. I mean, I heard you know, uh Natasha Berry mentioned uh during public comment, the importance of the board helping to set priorities that, you know, we've got way lot of high value, high important things and a challenge being able to carry it all out. So how the budget process aligns with the priority setting and the evidence of success and our progress? So it's not a reflection at all on, you know, it, it sounds like the kinds of things that are getting mapped out are definitely the right things that need to get looked at and asked. It's more of a question of how it intersects and aligns with the planning prioritizing and, and metrics for success.
Received. Okay. Um, I know a couple of uh, board members gave their feedback in um, in their comments, but just let's go ahead um and give our feedback to Assistant Assistant Superintendent Paulansby if they're on the right track, keeping in mind that there's still stakeholder groups that need to be engaged. So thumbs up, yes. Thumbs down, no. And there's your direction, Assistant Superintendent Paulansby. Thank you so much for this evening's presentation. Uh, next we will have a um another presentation. Um, as many of you are aware, our LCAP plan is our three-year plan that describes our goals, actions, our services, uh and our expenditures that seek to support uh positive or better student outcomes um for us in Berkeley Unified School District. So tonight's presentation will focus on the LCAP annual update as well as the budget overview uh for families. So without further ado, here is a presentation this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Ruben Aurelio, Assistant Superintendent. And in the next hour, I'm just joking. Just joking, we're not gonna be here for next hour. Um, this is just a routine update that we're gonna be providing you this evening. As uh President Brown read off, there's a couple of components to this presentation. I do not plan on reading this to you all. And we're gonna move through it quickly. Um, it is posted and everyone can um read through this presentation. Just a reminder, we do have four goals built into the LCAP and you see them in front of you here. Um, there's two objectives this evening. One is that we need to do this presentation to the board uh before February twenty-eighth. So we're meeting the requirements of the LCAP. Um, we need to share a mid-year update on twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two LCAP. We know that we are in year one of a three-year LCAP. Um, and so when we go through the metrics that you're going to see, keep in mind that this is really a three-year goal setting. And so you should, wouldn't expect to see completion on many of the items at this point. We are halfway through year one of a three-year process. Um, and then the board has no action they need to take tonight. They're really just receiving this presentation. Um, another thing to remember, not that we all want to be reminded, but we are still dealing with a pandemic. And that has had impacts on how we progressed with some of these items you will see later. Um, quick reminder, you've probably seen this before. Last year in the development of LCAP, there really are four components that we talked about. Uh, we determined obviously the student needs to, the feedback we get from schools, from stakeholder groups. One thing that's changed, you're gonna start to hear educational partners as a new terminology. Um, in, in LCAP language, that is what used to be stakeholders. You can start to hear educational partners. And that's includes our staff, our students, our parents, our community. This is just a visual showing you where we're at. The red mark in the middle, we're sort of halfway through year one of this three-year LCAP. And you can see it, it goes back and shows you our previous three-year LCAP. There was, I like to say, a blip, which is the Learning Continuity Plan, that was sort of a one-year holdover during the heart of the pandemic. Um, but we are in that red spot there where we're updating the board on a mid-year. So part of the reason we're doing a mid-year, this is new, which is the supplement. Um, after the LCAPs were approved back in June, and for us, I think we did, we brought it back in September to officially approve our LCAP. Uh, the states uh provided some additional dollars to school districts. So this supplement is required because of the additional dollars that were provided. So this includes the mid-year review and the progress so far. This is the component of this deck that provides what the difference was in additional funding that we received after the adopted LCAP. Now for us, it's actually quite minimal. You can see that only two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand additional dollars came in, which in our total budget is really less than one percent. So it's pretty negligible in the additional dollars we received during the supplement. So this accounts for the overview for budget portion for parents. Just want to acknowledge that they're not gonna see us what you typically see as the budget overview of parents. We just have to acknowledge that we did receive additional dollars and this is where it's. So these are some items of some of the work that we're doing this year as part of our twenty-one, twenty-two LCAP. You can see some of the items we've included. And so the next two sections, I'm gonna move rather quickly because everyone has this, you can pull this off the agenda as well. This is the mid-year update uh portion, and we use the color coding scheme here for meeting or receiving close to or improving and then not meeting or no data available. Some of our metrics are end-of-year metrics or some of the tech metrics, things that are tied to assessments, for example, that are taken in the spring that we then not receive the data till the following fall. So you will notice there are some areas where there's no data to represent. And this is, sections are separated out by our goals. Goal one being our academic achievement goal. And you can see the data related to each of these action items. We're not gonna go through each one at this point, but it's there for you to review. Continuing on in goal one. And then we move into goal two, which is our interventions. Goal three is around social emotional connections there. And you see some of the items that are here for you to review. And then goal four is our overview of how we evaluate the LCAP. Each of these goals have specific action items attached to them. And so we did a similar chart to show the progress being made on those action items and the dollars that have been spent to date. I do want to acknowledge that there are items here where you'll see zero or very close to zero percent spent. Sometimes that it means that we have contracts that are in the pro, in progress that might not have had dollars invoiced. Um, we, I did ask my team to include some of those on here to show that we have contracts that are in the works um with some services that have begun. But when we report that dollars spent, they're not showing up yet. An example of that is our EL master plan or multilegal master plan. So we're including it here. It's a hundred percent of the dollars spent, but we know that that is a plan that's in progress. And those dollars haven't been fully invoiced yet. And these are uh the action items related to each of the goals and the progress that's been made. You can see that there are a lot of, we're making some really good progress in some of these goals and actions. Lastly, is the component that is the supplement to the annual LCAP. This is a new portion of the LCAP. Uh, there are five questions that are to be answered as part of this update. Question two for us does not require an answer because we did not receive the dollars that were attached to that question. That, like I said earlier, no action is required of the board. Um, but this is just for your information. I'm not going to attempt to read this to you all. It is listed there. I do want to point out that there is a PDF that is attached that is the full supplement, um, which is a much lengthier document that, that we needed to complete. But what I do want to point out is that we do list the different funding items that have come in. You can see that listed in that second paragraph. Like I said, question two was not applicable to us. And then we have the third question. Just a description of the LA and how we engaged our partners in, in spending some of these one-time dollars. And similarly, how we continue to implement the Federal American Rescue Plan Act. And then this is the last question that we are required to, to answer. And that was my attempt to keep it under an hour for you all.
And under an hour, you did keep it. Thank you so much for the presentation. Uh, we'll go to Director Saini for questions.
Quick question. Thank you for the presentation. Um, and it dovetailed well with my question that I just asked for the budget. Um, I love the color coding. I have a couple of questions in the sense of um, that's the report that's going to the state, but in the way that it's also useful to us as a tool when we're going to our various um stakeholder committees and the like is could um, could we have a tool similar to what you've done that has a column on the baseline? And then what's been measured for mid-year? Or the end of year um so that we can actually see where the, where the change or lack of change or is stable went would be really helpful.
Director Saini, I agree. And in fact, our Director of Brea is actually in the audience. I forgot to promote her. But she, she is listening and uh she helped her and her team put together all those metrics. And they're in that process of doing the comparative data. Um, it's also good to look back beyond even pre-pandemic at times because you know, we know things have been out of whack over the last two years. So it's really good to have some, some of those comparisons.
And I do think we had growth targets in the LCAP, like when we did that. So it'd be good.
We do. And just a reminder that we're gonna be entering our LCAP development phase in the next month. And you know, and that's coupled with our budget development.
Great. And then the second question is, I was a little confused on the color coordinating for the action items. Um, uh, because the percentages, it didn't seem to be relative to how much was encumbered or spent. Um, so I just was a little unclear on the green, yellow um on actions.
Uh, I, I, it got a little confusing and I, I, I will say I'm at fault because there were a number of items that were showing up initially as zero percent. How you, the master plan as an example for spent dollars, I, I would say to date, we have not spent a single dollar. Even though there's a contract with CAVE to do this work and the work is ongoing. So when we pull budgets, sometimes we're not seeing the dollars spent. So that was.
Right. I, I understand that part, but like there would be something that would be green that said thirty-eight percent spent and then something would be yellow that said forty-five percent spent. So I just don't know what the green or the yellow meant.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks for that clarity. So be- because this is a year, a three-year LCAP. Who, the judgment call was how we made adequate progress in six months of year one of the three-year LCAP. And that's how we sort of did adequate progress.
So it aligned to the previous chart.
Right, right.
On it. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry for the confusion.
Director Alper.
Um, thank you, um, Assistant Superintendent Aurelio. I just wanted to um remind you all, you and of, of a provision in our LCAP policy that's I think unique to BUSD um that, that requires um the superintendent to recommend not continuing an action um from last year's LCAP and so I just wanted, I don't remember us doing that in, in the last couple of years. And I think the, I know Vice President Babett was involved in the um writing of so, of these bylaws too, but um, I think the idea is that we, you know, wanna look critically at everything we're funding and um, the board doesn't have to explicitly in the policy, the board doesn't have to accept that recommendation, but it kind of forces everybody to look at, if we really had to cut something from what we're doing, what's, what's the least effective thing we're doing? So just a reminder that that's in our policy.
Thank you for that reminder, Director Alper. Uh, any other questions from the board for Associate Superintendent Aurelio? Seeing then, thank you again, um, Associate Superintendent for your presentation this evening. And for uh the speediness associated with it. So thank you for that. Um, as you're aware, we're gonna move to our next uh agenda item, which will be our first action item of the evening. And last fall, the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education uh had a unanimous vote to uh commit to supporting climate literacy up with the literacy resolution. And tonight, we have a unique opportunity um to support climate change uh even more through climate change education um and to support many lawmakers uh to help fund this important work. So I'd like to invite Vice President Babett um to begin us with uh this evening's presentation.
Thank you so much. I'm just wondering um if one of our staff can share the presentation.
Uh, I have it here, Vice President Babett, and I'll, I'll begin to share my screen.
Thank you, Superintendent Stevens.
So keeping in mind with um funding, we're still on that funding train. Uh, and really one of our roles as board advocates is to really um help support funding coming at the state level. And so I want to appreciate all of those who have worked on um this letter thus far. Um, and if we go to the next slide, you'll see kind of a recap of the what. Um, the climate literacy movement continues. Um, we are, as Sarah Raina said during public comment, so pleased that LAUSD um has passed a resolution to really meet the scale and the urgency of the challenge that we face today. And we know that one of our major discussions uh within our own group around just getting the work going was around funding. So if we go to the next step, we, the next slide, we'll notice that funding is definitely a concern because to gather all of the information of where it fits naturally in our curriculum uh to create the scientific understanding, the historical, political context of environmental justice, to really empower our youth to be the next generation leaders, to make better choices than uh my generation and before me has made. And to really can teach that advocacy skills needed for change and the hands-on, community-based um projects and days of service and actually doing the work, money is required. Next slide, please. So then the what? So a broad coalition has come together and we are requesting two-hundred-million dollars to be allocated uh from the state for state, local, and district climate education. And you can see the logos of the many uh different organizations who have signed on thus far. And you can see the logos of the many different organizations who have signed on thus far. And there are more than this, but I just wanted to highlight a few. Next slide, please. And then the now what, the now what is let's add our logo, let's add BU SD to this letter of, um, advocacy and request of financial support to our budget chairs, to our state superintendent of public instruction, uh, to our very own Nancy Skinner, the chair of the Senate Budget Committee, uh, and our assemblyman. We can go to the next slide. And so, oh, the letter asks, uh, for $40 million to be provided for a leadership at the state level, $60 million for direction and support at the county level, and 100 million for, uh, district-wide implementation. And we know that this is all important so that we can execute a climate literacy implementation and strategy-focused solution. And the longer we wait to do this, the more urgent the crisis will become and actually the more expensive it will be for us to address it down the line. So I just want to ask you to please join me in, um, supporting this and hoping that our district can sign on to advocating for transformative change and solutions that must include our students in their classrooms. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Board, uh, before we give our direction, uh, are there any questions for Vice President Babett from this presentation? Uh, Director Sinai?
Just a quick question, Vice President Babett, thanks for moving this forward. Um, I, when it came across my email, I was excited about it. I'm wondering, is there actually a bill that's been introduced yet? Is someone sponsoring it or is part of it trying to get someone to carry it?
Uh, there is a senator who is beginning to, um, to bring a bill forward and this is a letter of support, uh, to advocate around the many different fronts. So we're not sure what's gonna happen with, you know, with their climate bills, but we want to make sure that our voices are heard in this process.
Uh, I, I want to echo Director Sinai's sentiments to say thank you to you, Vice President, um, Babett, for your work and also echo the public comments that were given tonight for your leadership um, on this climate literacy movement. So thank you so much for, um, sharing your passion with the board and with the rest of the district. Are there any other questions for Vice President Babett? Director Rasside?
Yeah, I think this is great, thank you so much, uh, Vice President Babett for bringing this forward. I wanted to ask if, do you know who the senator is that's working on this? And there, um, if they, if they have a funding amount in mind and if it's consistent with the one in the letter?
I do, but it's actually too late for me to pull up names and I don't want to miss call names, but I will definitely forward you the information.
Okay, Board, uh, what is your, your pleasure, is there a motion to, uh, give our, uh, support as the Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education?
Well, Vice President Babett wants to move it, I'll second it.
Okay, well, I will move that we, uh, sign on to this letter of advocacy in support of $200 million across the state for climate literacy education.
Thank you, Vice President Babett, uh, and it has been properly seconded by Director, Director Sinai. Ms. Badios, can you please call the roll? Yes, Director Vasilev?
Yes.
Director Sinai?
Yep.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Vice, uh, yeah, Vice President Babett?
Yes.
President Brown? Yes, enthusiastically, thank you again, Vice President Babett. Uh, our next item on the agenda, our final item on the agenda and our last action item, um, is to approve the, um, MOU memorandum of understanding with lifelong medical, uh, for Rosa Parks's after-school, uh, program. I do not believe there is a presentation on this one, um, so let's go ahead and, um.
I need to recuse.
Sinai, you need to recuse.
I need to recuse.
I know you need to recuse yourself, so I was gonna give you permission to do that right now, but, uh, Director Sinai will recuse herself from this vote. Um, is there a motion to?
I'll make the motion.
It's been moved by Director Alper, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Director Vasilev, Ms. Badios, can you please call the roll? Director Vasilev?
Yes.
Director Alper?
Yes.
Vice President Babett?
Yes.
President Brown? Yes, thank you so much. Um, please go in yourself, according to the information items that are listed on our agenda for this evening, we will now move to the second opportunity for public comment. Are there any public commentators at this time? If so, please raise your hand. There is, there are two public comments, uh, Ms. Badios, can you please promote Lindsay Nofelt, followed by Ian? The, both of you have three minutes, seeing no other comments for this public comment period. Ms. Nofelt, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Um, thank you so much, I really appreciated listening to this and I appreciated listening to the special education workshop. But I wanted to express my disappointment that it wasn't quite a workshop. Um, I really appreciate the work that staff put in to the presentation. Um, but it took away every opportunity to have questions answered from the board in a public forum. And that to me was really, really disappointing. So I hope that in future presentations, staff will realize that the time bounds are real so that we can, uh, leave enough time for, for a real discussion. And that's really what I missed tonight, thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you so much, Ms. Nofelt, for your feedback and for being here at this, late into this evening. Uh, Ms. Badios, can you please promote Ian? Hi Ian, welcome.
Hi, um, actually, my name is Eliza. Um, I want to echo a little bit of what, um, Lindsay Nofelt just, um, stated, um, about the special education presentation, which I did appreciate. I wanted to follow up, um, on what Vice President, I think Babett, some of the questions that she raised. I would really love if some of those follow-up questions could actually be presented in a future presentation or workshop. But one of the things that she mentioned was about family engagement and she, she posed that question and, um, I wanted to make a comment about that, that, um, issue of family engagement. First is, um, when they were talking about the idea of special, of students with disabilities as being general education students first. So my concern with that is that, um, when it's communicated to families, to caregivers, that, um, what that means, it's, it's not really clear what that means, I, I should just say. What I have a kind of reaction to is the notion that students with disabilities are general, general education students first. It does have a suggestion that, um, students should be assimilated into general education without, um, thinking about how general education should be changed to feed the individualized needs of the students. So for instance, um, if students are learning from a, uh, from a reading program that's based in the science of reading, then general education should also be modified so that it is based in the, the science of reading as well. Um, and then secondly, the, um, the question of when families are, I think, feel perhaps pressured, feel pressured to sign IAPs on the spot or not given opportunity to meaningfully participate in the development of the IAPs. A couple of, a couple of statements that were stated during that discussion. One is, um, the idea that student, that parents would have opportunities to agree or disagree or that parents would have opportunities to give feedback. So that suggests to me that those roles are actually secondary roles for, for families. When in fact, they should be collaborating in the developed, development of the IAP and not to wait for more of a secondary role in order to give feedback or to, to agree or disagree. So that's what that suggests, you know, the secondary role. So, um, those are the two comments that I have about how family engagement is being actually communicated to families. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your, for your comments and for your feedback as well. Um, at this time, we will now adjourn our, unless there's a second opportunity for board member comments, we will now adjourn our meeting at 10:44 PM. Thank you all so much and have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody, thanks all the staff for being here so late.